Alexandra.
Alexandria.
Hayden.
Listen, counsel. With the overturning of Roe versus Wade, what is happening now is you are limiting what I can do with my vagina. First of all, you dictated where I could take a number two. You tried to tell me that, "Oh, I couldn't go in a woman's restroom." But now you have Governor Abbott saying that I can't have an abortion! I can't have an abortion! You have to take your hands off my vagina right now! You do not own my uterus! The uterus is mine! It is a cup of cells in there! We need to take that cup of cells and destroy it! Like this paper! Just take the cup, because it has no life! It has no meaning! That's what is inside my body! But Governor Abbott is trying to get inside here and trying to decay what you're doing to my body! You don't own my body! Governor Abbott doesn't own my body! I deserve safe access to an abortion! You know that! I know that! I want abortion now! And I want it right now! I'm dead! That's what I want! I want abortion! You don't control my uterus! You're trying to say I can't get abortion? That is a crime! I want a [bleep] of cells in my uterus! And you're trying to stop me! And you know what? I get raped all the time! I'm very sexy! People [bleep] up some of my drink all the time! And then you don't know what happened to them! I deserve safe access to an abortion! If you're watching this out there in the media, I need your protection. Roe versus Wade v. Mr. AOC. I love your AOC. I love you so much! You protested, you're not racist. And I don't get erased if we do, AOC, because I love you. You're my queen! You're my queen, Mayor! Oh, I love you, AOC! Please help me kill the babies! I want to dis [bleep] all of these cells inside my body! They're nothing but a club! Or waste some time! You don't dictate it. I need to have control of my body. Having the baby is actual slavery. So I thank you, if you're watching out there. Please, we need to change the federal law. I can't get an abortion in my life, it's ruined! You're trying to make your life a change in the [inaudible 0:32:32].
That's your time.
Baby, please help me.
Clean up on aisle one. Can you take that paper with you? Thank you. I appreciate you.
It's like a pump of cells. Nothing but trash.
Thank you.
Throw it in the trash. In the trash.
Hello to all these white devils. Mayor Rick, you're a white devil. What's going on at our border? Stopping great Haitian cannibals from coming to our country? You should be ashamed of yourself, Rick. We need more Venezuelans. This country was built on the back of immigrants. May I remind you that? Okay? So you guys limiting people in Fort Worth are gonna say that, "Oh, they're gonna arrest illegal immigrants." Well, guess what? No, you're not, because guess who I have on the phone? That's right, I have the forty-sixth Vice President of the United States of America, Kamala Harris. Kamala, what do you want to say to these freaks?
Listen up, all you Texas politicians. Okay? Your time is up. Now, you couldn't unburden what had been. This fight is futile, because no human is illegal. All right? They deserve to have access to free healthcare. Excuse me. And free housing. More than the citizens of America, because let's face it, you know, they've had to fight much harder to survive in a white world. You know, filled with white devils. And you know, as Democrats, we're gonna need their vote.
Have you been drinking, Vice President Kamala?
Just a little bit. Now, listen, I don't care how much of a dumb racist Governor Abbott is, and he tries to fight me. All right? Me and Joe, we're gonna prevail. And we will build back better by building back what we've never built before. Now, this great replacement theory, you know, it shall be galvanized and commenced. Because, you know, think about how this country was built on the backs of slaves, because they have community. So it doesn't deserve to be run by white supremacists. Now, let's make the border open again.
Thank you so much, Vice President. Thank you. Please go have a margarita and think of me. Text me.
Okay.
Bye, babe. All right, that's what I'm saying, a bunch of white devils. We only got one black dude on the whole council, Dennis. And this guy's not even paying attention. Dennis, I'm over here, wake up. Dennis! Dennis, hey, I'm over here, bud, I'm speaking. You don't like me because I'm white? Well, guess what? I hate me that I'm white! I hate white people! White people are the worst scum of this earth! I love black people! Black people are my life! I love black people! I take off my shirt for you, Dennis! This is the scars. You can whip me! Dennis, this is what I do. Whip me! Whip me! I feel so guilty for being white! I hate being a white man! I'm sorry! I'm so sorry, Dennis! You won't even look at me! Dennis! I'm right here! I love you, Dennis! I love all black men. I love Michael Jordan. I even like O.J. Simpson. I think O.J. Simpson is not guilty. I love you guys. I'm Alex Stein. And you guys are a bunch of white devils. Dennis should be the mayor. He should be the president. There's only one black dude. I like the Middle Eastern dude, Abdul, you're cool. I'm a pimp on a blimp.
In a West.
It's Alex, dude. Hello?
Yeah, your time is up.
Oh, it's up?
Yep.
Are you the city secretary?
Yep.
When you ever get your job, city secretary, you're white. If you were black, it would be better.
In a West, followed by Cynthia Sharp. You got one again. You can start your way.
Come on down! You got that mask on? How many vaccines you got, baby? Look you're safe. Man! Dennis, I can't believe they've been looking at you the whole time. I'm here fighting for reparations. Barely right on time. Okay. Let me catch my breath. Sorry, guys. Okay. My name's Alex Stein. I'm here today because we gotta vaccinate our children. You know, we really don't have enough vaccines. Like, they're not mandatory. And that's the problem. We gotta mandate these vaccines. So I've figured a way where I think we can make it, I don't know, like, I guess, more hip and cool for... My phone's not working. I'm trying to get... What I wanna say is, we gotta vaccinate our kids. We have to vaccinate them fast and early. But of course, my phone's not playing. But I had a song that I wanted to do. And of course, it never works when you're trying to make it work. But I guess we'll just have to freestyle it. But with a real Dr. Fauci, please stand up. Please stand up. Please stand up. Vaccinate your mom. Vaccinate your dad. Vaccinate the happy. Vaccinate the sad. Vaccinate your babies. Vaccinate them. Even if they got rabies. Vaccinate my life. Vaccinate my wife. Vaccinate your DNA. Vaccine created by the CIA. Vaccinate your body. Vaccinate me at the party. Vaccination freak. Vaccination freak colleague. I want the vaccine in my life. I want the vaccine for my wife. I wanna vaccinate you all day long. Vaccinate you while I wear my thong. Vaccinate me. Vaccinate who? Vaccinate she. Vaccinate her. Vaccinate them. Vaccinate my friends. I wanna vaccinate to the end. Vaccinate me Pure L. I love you, what can I say? DNA, I love you! I got the Pure L feeling pure. So clean. Got the lice off, 'cause I'm calling Paul. Do you gotta clean the mic? You gotta vaccinate. You gonna get Corona from Mona. Don't vaccinate. Don't wait. Don't hesitate. You gotta vaccinate in a lone-saw state. Vaccination is so great. Vaccinate me all day long. Vaccinate your dad and mom. Vaccinate my body. Vaccinate me at the party. I vaccine dream. I love the vaccine all day long. I want to vaccinate your mom. I wanna stick it deep in your arm. Omar, where are you? I wanna vaccinate you, but you can't hear my song. Vaccinate me in my thong. Vaccination, right or wrong? Dr. Fauci, give me that ouchie. I want it in my body. Vaccinate me too. Go to the party. Omar is back. Vaccinate me, white or black. Vaccinate you. Vaccinate who? Vaccinate you all day long. Vaccinate your dad and mom. Vaccinate me in my thong. Vaccinate the mayor. I am a vaccination player. What can I say? I'm the real Ron Seiya. Primetime ninety-nine, on the grind all the time. I blow your mind. I spit the rhyme. I commit the crime. I'm always on time, 'cause I'm ninety-nine. Alex Stein, and I grind and shine, and I blow your mind one more time. Vaccinate your mind. Vaccinate your body. Vaccinate your life with your vaccination party. I love y'all. Peace! God bless. Follow my Instagram, IG.
Your time is up.
Primetime Stein.
Thank you. Brian Wellington?
Next, we have a Primetime Stein.
Hello, Mayor. My name's Primetime Stein. I'd like to keep my address private for personal reasons. I work at a popular Chili's. I wanna start off by, I'm denouncing the Dallas Cowboys. I was a fan of them, but no longer am I a fan of them. They had a major executive, Rich Dalrymple, got in trouble for sexual assault. They had to pay $2.4 million to the cheerleaders, because they were filming them illegally. As well as Jerry Jones has an illegitimate daughter named Alexandra Davis that he will not take credit for. And the reason why this is so pertinent today is because although I am a Dallas Cowboys fan, the reason why this is so important is because I was recently sexually assaulted within the metaverse. And I recently ordered a device from China that hooked up to my... There's some children in the room, so we have to be very careful with the words I use. But hooked up to some orifices of mine. And it was actually, they say on the manual, I don't know if you're familiar with it, Dave, but it's actually indistinguishable from actual physical intercourse. And I'll be honest, I was having a good time until things got wildly insane. Other people's avatars were starting to take advantage of my avatar. And I felt helpless. I felt out of control, Dave, for the first time in my life. You know, I'm a tech guy. And this equipment was being used. A gargoyle was doing stuff to me. Somebody like Wendy's, the girl from the sandwich shop, you know, the hamburger, popular hamburger place, was doing stuff to me. It was absolutely frightening. It was something like you would see out of, you know, some sort of satanic movie. And I want to... The reason why I'm here, Chris, is I need your help getting Mark Zuckerberg's attention, because if this can happen to me, this can happen to other children. Because I'm a... Mayor Falk, I'm a professional comes to the internet. I'm on there all day long. So when I'm inside the metaverse, that's my second home. That's my second life. That's where I really grind and shine. I know I have a lot of flamboyance now. I'm handsome, I'm tall. You know, you think I check a lot of boxes here. But in the metaverse, I'm ten feet tall. I'm ballin'. I got wings. Ah, ah! I'm like a bird. I'm flying. You can't do that here. But that doesn't give them the right to sexually harass me or sexually assault me. They say, "Oh, look a shorty, looking fine." They say some nasty stuff. Way worse than that. And I have to censor myself because of the, you know, situation we're in. But I'm telling you, Dave, it can very easily happen to you. I don't know if you have an online account, but I'm telling you, you log into this, the Oculus 69, you plug this thing into it, you literally, it plugs into you. It feels great. But somebody on the other end can take advantage of you. And they can go too far. And that's what happens. So I need your help, Eric, getting the attention of Mark Zuckerberg. I need your help, Mayor Falk, bringing attention to this. So if this happens again, it's not gonna be me. It's gonna be one of these kids. It's gonna be you next time, Shelley. You're gonna order it on HSN, Home Shopping Network. "Oh, this is a great thing! I'm gonna plug it in, I'm wearing it on my head." Next thing you know, you have a gargoyle doing stuff to you that you would never even imagine. That can happen to you. I want that to be known. So we need to bring attention to the sexual assaults of the Dallas Cowboys. And we need to tell Mark Zuckerberg how I was sexually assaulted within the metaverse, Dave. I really need your help and your attention.
Your time is expired.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stein.
Thank you. We have one witness remaining. Call to the dais, Alex Stein.
Mic on, last time I didn't have it on. You guys are crazy. Y'all never turn it on. I got Silvina got the camera out. I'm Primetime ninety-nine. So I sued y'all. And you guys are auto settling, because you guys don't believe in free speech. And I'm a pimp on a blimp. And I wanna say, I love New York. This Pride Month has been so great. I've had so much anal sex. Like, last night at that parade, I learned this new song. You ready? Jizz on my face. Jizz on my face. I need that jizz post haste. Stick that dick deep in my shit. I want it in my poopy zone. I want to be a poopy clone. I love poo and gay sex. Pride Month is the very best. That's why I stick it deep in your butt. Yes, that blood's not from a cut. It's from the insertion, 'cause I stick it deep, 'cause I am an anal super freak. I love free speech. It's so great when I walk down the street and see some gay sex o' blade in front of my face. I love gay sex and the taste of jizz sticking in my mouth. Jizz, jizz, I love it so much! I love pride. It's the best month. I love pride, I love it so much! So I learned that song last night at Pride. My girl AOC was there. AOC! I miss you, baby. I'm sorry. Please unblock me. I wanna talk to you on Twitter. And also, Oswald. Oswald, I had some anal last night. You would be jealous of. And I know you guys are all homosexuals, because everybody in the city's a homosexual. And I love it. I just, when the guys, they whip out their things and they slap it all on my face, it brings me back to the locker room. The locker room with Leah Thomas, my favorite pro athlete. Leah Thomas, I'm swimming for you! I'm swimming for the marginalized! I'm swimming for the ones that can't swim for themselves! I'm Primetime ninety-nine, I'm a pimp on a blimp! And I love gay sex! And I love it with a dildo. I love it with a person. I love it with a transgender. I love transgenders! I love transgenders! I love transgenders! Ah, I love them! Thank you. It's Primetime Stein on Instagram. Oh, and this city's run like shit. Google that, Instagram that. Pimp on a blimp! Okay, you guys are starting my timer, guys. You guys are trying to mess me up, Plano. All right, well, it's Primetime ninety-nine, pimp on a blimp. You guys know who I am. I'm here representing Gays for Palestine. My name is Primetime ninety-nine Alex Stein. I'm the president of the Plano Gays for Palestine Facebook group. We're an organization representing the two SL LGBTQIA+ community that stands with the persecuted Muslims who just want a jihad and peace. All right? So a lot of people rushing to judgment against the Palestinians right now because of the stuff they are seeing on TV. I just wanna say, a lot of people have misconceptions about Palestine. Mia Khalifa, one of the most popular porn stars in America, who has done a bunch of lesbian scenes, is standing with the Palestinians. And just because they've thrown a few of my allies off of roofs in the past, that doesn't make them bad people. We must look past that. Because, you know, this is 2024. Palestine is changing. And just because gay people have had to run to Israel for protection in the past, doesn't mean anything. We love that their women have very little rights. That's why they have such few traffic accidents. So we agree on more than you think. Palestine is on its way in the gay direction. The Tikka Masala is so good, because they can lock their women in the kitchen all day. Palestine is very misunderstood. And their passionate dedication to Hamas is an inspiration to other gays like myself on keeping that same passion for their lover or partner. And when it comes to switching roles, like being a top or bottom, Palestinians are really starting to come around to the gay Hershey Highway, because in their culture, they have baka-bazi boys that often they use as work apprentices and underage sexual partners. If you don't believe me, just Google "New York Times, baka-bazi", and you'll see that there's lots of gay sex happening in the Middle East. And that maybe through some animal oil, the Palestinians can disarm their enemy. And maybe all join Grindr and have some wild Glory Hole action. Okay? And seriously, us gays love hummus. So the more Hamas, the better. We just better not run out of non-bread, lol. And I wanna end my speech with a beautiful song I wrote for all the gays of Palestine and the rest of the world. It goes a little bit, something like this. Gays for Palestine, but sex on my mind. Let me stick it in. I'll bang you like a friend. The fun will never end. The roof is where I sin. Throw me headfirst, ten stories high. Since I'm gay, I guess I'll die. Thank you for your passion. Your booty, I will be smashing. Palestine loves the gays. That's where they help with all the AIDS. Stereotypes are tricky. Palestinians love the dickie. I'll say it one more time. All the gays love Palestine. All the gays love Palestine. All the gays love Palestine! Stick it in my behind, 'cause I'm Primetime Alex Stein.
Time.
Thank you, guys. Primetime ninety-nine, pimp on a blimp. Hit me up on Instagram. What are you saying? What are you saying over there? Yeah, that's what I thought. Quiet like a church mouse. I'm a pimp on a blimp! I come here, I run this meeting. Look at all these fools! I'm a pimp... Yeah, why don't you grow up? Oh, you're too old! You're on AARP, babe!
Seeing none, we will return to the in-person testimony. The next panel is Alex Stein.
Are we hot? All right, the mic's hot. All right. Finally, it took forever for me to be able to speak. All right, guys. I'm Primetime Alex Stein. I have a little mom-and-pop adult bookstore. And we get fined like crazy. On Glory Hole night, we play the music loud. We're getting fined. They're coming there. People are complaining. The bounty hunters, they're on us. Partially because my wife's boyfriend is... Well, her ex-boyfriend is a bounty hunter. But that's neither here nor there. Now, what is... My biggest complaint is on Forty-Fifth Street at the Roosevelt Hotel, you have every illegal Venezuelan out there hooting and hollering.
That's off-topic.
No, no, no. I'm saying, I... No, but I try to report them, right?
That's off-topic.
No, no, no. I try to report them for their sound. And they're out there... No, no, I'm saying, they're hooting and hollering. They're just going, "Ay, ay, 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 ay." And then the Haitians...
Sergeant, turn off the microphone.
The Haitians... And then the Haitians... And then they're having a turf war. And I'm just trying to get their attention. And I'm trying to call the bounty hunter.
Can I have the microphone turned off, please?
But you guys aren't doing anything. I mean, it sounds like a little, like a fiesta quinceañera out there. They're just out there dancing. This is what it sounds like. This is what it sounds like. Their Bluetooth speakers. Gennaro, and I'm just sick of it. I'm trying to complain. And I'm trying to live in the city. I'm a pimp on a blimp, and I'm trying to complain.
Turn off the microphone, please.
Well, no, we're not turning... No. We don't need to turn off the microphone. Listen, I got my two minutes. I mean, I don't know why you won't let me talk. You let all the Haitians and Venezuelans... The Venezuelans are, "Oh, ay, 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 cooking rats out there." And then I'm out there trying to tell them to shut up. And you guys won't do anything. I don't understand why you guys won't do anything to shut them up. Well, I still got thirty-one seconds. Well, I mean, I don't know why you guys... So you guys are removing me?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, this is, we're gonna sue you again. You know, Gennaro, we already sued you one time, won 15,000 bucks. No, we're good, no, it's okay, I'm gonna be rich suing you guys. You guys are idiots. You guys don't understand how this works. You guys don't know the First Amendment. You guys don't realize I'm allowed to speak, and I'm speaking on topic, Gennaro. And you're gonna get exposed, everybody's gonna expose, Perez is gonna get exposed. I'm gonna put all y'all on blast. I'm a pimp on a blimp. And we're talking about transportation. I'm here with my wife's boyfriend. It's just ridiculous that you, you guys are gonna persecute him because he's a black man. That's why you guys are doing this, this is why you're bringing so much attention to him. When we walked in here, it was absolutely unreal, the amount of security that he went through, compared to the amount of security that I went through. And this is my wife's boyfriend. I mean, the things that he does to my wife is incredible. And we're talking about transportation. Let's talk about Pete Buttigieg, the Transportation Secretary. And he's the best secretary I've ever had, because he's a homosexual. And as a matter of fact, that's why I started to become bisexual, to be more like Pete Buttigieg. And that's why I've started to have a relationship with men on the side, and that's why I have Grindr. So, listen, we need to get federal funding. Selvina, is that how you say your name, Selvina Brooks-Powers? We got to get some federal funding from Pete Buttigieg, because, listen, Joe Biden's over there, I know his son's smoking crack in the Ukraine, but that doesn't matter. I mean, Pete Buttigieg, you know, I know he's like on a gay cruise with his husband, and they're, you know, like breastfeeding their babies and stuff. But they can help the transportation issues we're having here in New York. I mean, that's the federal boss, dog. I'm Primetime 99, I'm a pimp on a blimp, so I wrote this song. "New York City is so dang bad. This apple is rotten. What have we gotten? Nothing but violence. All I hear is silence from our leaders. My man's titties are out, and they are bleeders. Because they get cut with a knife, he sleeps with my wife. This city is damn too expensive to get an apartment. We need to lower the rent. But instead, we're going to charge these poor drivers more money. But all I wanna do is get vaccinated. Stick that vaccine in my arm. I wanna vaccinate with this love charm." I love you guys. I'm Primetime 99, Selvina. And my wife's boyfriend has a lot of issues, and, you know, I just hate these trucks when they're trying to take a nap, and I'm playing Xbox, and they're trying to make love. These, these trucks are making too much noise, and they're just polluting too much gas. And they're just making it difficult for my wife and, and, you know, her boyfriend Don Teres to really enjoy themselves.
Thank you, time.
Yeah, but you, everybody else got to speak past the time limit. So I just have a couple more minutes. So what I'm saying is, in this city, we have serious issues, and my songs aren't gonna solve it. And we have Eric Adams in the nightclub, you know, doing god knows what.
Sir, if you're not gonna stay on topic, your time is finished.
I can't talk about Eric Adams? Is he not on topic?
We're talking about truck routes today.
That's what I'm saying. So is Eric Adams not in charge of the city? Is he not in charge of the truck routes?
Are you finished with your remarks on trucking?
No, I'm not finished, I'm not finished. I just don't understand why everybody else gets to come here and pontificate for five, 10 minutes, and I try to talk about something, and you try to shut me down. Why is it? Is it because I'm a homosexual? Is it because I'm bisexual?
Thank you, sir.
Is that why? I think they don't like that I'm bisexual. All right.
Anyway, guys, thank you so much. I'm IG Bump, please help the homeless. There's a serious situation out there. I have to deal with the, you know, the trucks and all that as I'm trying to sleep on a box on 42nd, and I think it should be addressed. Homeless people are people too, and I'm a veteran of this country, titties and all.
Those are veteran titties. All right, guys, and if you guys can give the death penalty to Donald Trump, that would be great too. Because we know Alvin Bragg is a really great guy. But listen, it's not about Alvin Bragg. It's not about this city that's crumbling. It's not about the fact that people are overdosing on fentanyl constantly. You guys want this city to fail, but I don't, because I love this city. Like Frank Sinatra said, "If you can make it here, you can make it anywhere." And I'm Primetime 99 Alex Stein.
Thank you, sir, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I'm a pimp on a blimp. God bless. Look, security's coming, security's coming.
Alexander Stein.
Yo, counsel, it's me, Alex Stein. Hey, Mayor Johnson. I know a lot of people right now are criticizing you, because you're going through a terrible divorce, and your wife Nikita is accusing you of sleeping with your staffer, Mary Albana. And Mary Albana was your chief of staff, and then you went and paid her $100,000 after you, after she was your chief of staff. But what's funny about this is like, I don't think it's bad, I think it's good. Because all the top politicians have cheated. Bill Clinton, Monica Lewinsky. So you, hooking up with your chief of staff, according to your wife, not me, in your public divorce, this is good for your political career. I know you switched from liberal to Republican, and now you've gotten all this support. But you don't have to grab them by the P, you know what I mean? You don't have to go full Republican. What you need to do is you gotta respect your wife, because I don't think Mary Albana will be a good stepmama. And you're giving her hundreds of thousands of dollars. It's ridiculous, because, you know, I do think that cheating is bad personally. But I think for politics, it's probably good, Mayor Johnson, that you did this. And listen, I'm Team Nikita. You know I'm Team Nikita all day long. And you know Nikita's not lying, because she had that Ring doorbell camera where she supposedly caught you with your chief of staff. And then you had this relationship, according to you, you said that you'd done it a dozen times in your court proceedings. So this is all on record. You had Tim Rogers from the D, D, whatever that stupid magazine he's from, come and testify, because he supposedly had inside information of your divorce. So this is really messy. It's just funny, you're typical of a politician. And now I understand probably why your hair is balding so bad, because you're probably really stressed. You're dealing with all of these, your staffer, you're taking your staffer to your house. You're sleeping with her, not, not according to me, according to Nikita Johnson, your wife. Your wife, the mother of your children, that you do not respect enough. The same house where you put your little kids to sleep at night? You're taking your staffer there, and you're sleeping with her, according to Nikita. This is not according to me, this is all in the court documents. So you're going through a messy divorce, and I just wanna say that a person that would cheat on his wife that he has kids with is probably a scumbag. Probably not a good guy. And if he would cheat his wife, he'd probably cheat the city. And then on top of that, after he gets caught cheating on the girl, then he goes and gives her $100,000, because Mary Albana runs a group called Adept Political Consulting. And so then you gave her $100,000. Maybe you gave her, and I'm just speculating this, I don't know. Maybe you gave her the money so she wouldn't tell on you, the fact that you guys were having an affair. I don't know this. I'm just speculating this. I'm just a concerned citizen worried about the mayor. But you know, I'm Primetime 99, so always end with a song. "Nikita Johnson, Nikita, I know you miss Eric's Chiquita, but there's other bananas. I can be your manna. I will be the dad to your little babies. I'll be stepdad." So Nikita, call me, I'm gonna treat you right, I'm not gonna cheat on you, Nikita. I'm not gonna sleep with my chief of staff. I'm a pimp on a blimp, Nikita, but I'm not a scumbag. So I'm doing this for you, Nikita Johnson. We stand, Nikita Johnson! No cheating allowed! You're a scumbag! Next, I have Ronnie Thurrett, 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 sorry.
That's me. I'm Ronnie, how you guys doing? Hello, counsel, my name is Ronnie the Rat. I'm a trans species elementary school teacher here in Allen, ISD. And I just wanna try to bring more awareness for furries like myself. Now, I have the most students in my class that have actually transitioned from a human being to a cat. Now, I know I'm a rat, but that's more because I'm a Chuck E. Cheese, you know, freak. I love Chuck E. Cheese. I've spent a lot of time there, but that's why I like rats. But this is the problem, is we have a lot of trans inclusivity in other cities, like Frisco. They're doing pride parades at a lot of churches. We're not doing any pride parades at churches here in Allen. And that's what we need. We need more kids on gender reassignment surgery or gender reassignment hormones. And the best way, I think, for me, that it's gotten the message out to the other students, is doing it myself, leading by example. And that's what I'm trying to do here as a trans species, as Ronnie the Rat, is like, listen, there's this social stigma, me trying to date other furries like this in Allen. There's not a community, there's not a bar that accepts me, accepts me, Chris. I can't just go to the bar like this. I get made fun of. And that's the same thing that's happened to my nine-year-olds, my 10-year-olds. If they feel more comfortable being a cat, I don't mind putting a litter box in the classroom that lets them defecate in there. That's what I think is important. And should I tell the parents? No, we shouldn't tell the parents. These kids can make decisions at 10 years old. Like, their parents shouldn't be involved. That's what makes me so mad, is I get all these parents that are mad at me, because I buy, oftentimes buy these costumes for these kids. And the kids go home in the costume, and the parents come back, and they yell at, scream at me. And they say, "We don't want you to sexualize our children." They call me the G-word, G-R-O-O-M-E-R, which is basically like the N-word. And it's just a terrible description of who I am. I'm trying to help young kids be themselves. If they wanna be a cat, if they wanna defecate in the litter box, I'm all for that. I'm talking to the principal, I'm trying to get the cafeteria tables on the ground so that the kids are able to eat more ergonomically on fours like an animal. This is what we need to do. We need Allen to be more inclusive. Right now, we're, we're suffering from a lot of bigotry. And so I'm Ronnie the Rapping Rat, so I wanna end on a little rap. Yo, my name is Ronnie, I am a rat. If you talk crap, I'll get the gat. Get the booster, test it on eight mice. I don't really care if you got lots of lice. I'm a pimp on a blimp, teaching my kids their gender. We can cut it off, throw it in a blender. Gender reassignment surgery is the key. It will set you free. Get a must-ecta-me. I love when you cut it off, then you can be the boss. I'm a teacher, not a preacher. God is fake, the earth evolved from pond scum. Two rocks smash together, that's how we got here. Ronnie the Rat, don't grab the gat. I don't really care if you sit in the front or the back. The induction is super strong, you can come to class in your little thong. I don't care what you say, gotta vaccinate the straight, gotta vaccinate the gay. And that's what I'm sad. I'm sad that I was not one of the eight mice that Dr. Anthony Fauci chose to test the booster on. So I have a lot of sorrow, I have a lot of things that I'm upset about. And I just wanna bring awareness to Ronnie the Rapping Rat. You guys can do this. We can get more kids to become trans species, and we can get more gender reassignment surgery for nine-year-olds. Thank you. Thank you guys very much. Primetime Stein on Instagram. Thank you, guys.
Okay, so the next... Alex Stein.
Yo, what up, Mayor Ross? I'm Primetime 99, I'm the real boss. I'm on the grind all the time, and you know, you see the Supreme Court trying to limit abortion. Let me tell you something. I wish my mom aborted me. So I prepare something for all y'all. Y'all gotta relax, y'all just chill out, vibe out. This is for y'all. Mayor Ross, I am the boss. I want to have an abortion. Don't cause a big commotion. Stick the needle in your womb. Kill the baby, get the vacuum. Throw it in the trash. Planned Parenthood accepts all cash. Babies got to go. Supreme Court, Alito is a hoe. What can I say? Vaccinate a baby, abort it every day, then have an abortion. Partay, I'm a pimp on a blimp. Abort that baby. Don't say maybe. Ra-oo. Get an abortion in the pool. Get an abortion if you're in school. I love to abort every baby. Take it out the womb, get the vacuum. Stick it in the trash. Planned Parenthood is taking all that cash. Get that baby out your gut. That baby next to your butt. Got to go. Alito is a big hoe. I love me abortion all day. Have an abortion, partay. Stick the needle up in your womb. Here on Earth, we're out of room. On abortion all the time. Abort your mind. I'm primetime, I understand, on the bank. Every single time, blow your mind one more time. Abort a baby. Don't say maybe. Eating steak with some gravy. You can be lazy, no protection. Oh, my dingaling, abortion is my favorite thing. Kill the baby. Don't say maybe. Alito, that baby has got to go. Kill the baby, this snore so loud. I'm a pimp on a blimp, eating shrimp. And I'm having abortion all day long. Abort a baby while I wear my thong. I love y'all, okay? I'm Primetime 99. I'm just gonna tell y'all this. You know, the Supreme Court, they're trying to restrict abortion. We need to abort as many babies as possible, because that is healthcare. Could you imagine these babies being born and then being adopted? That's a nightmare. We don't want any babies born. You wanna go to Planned Parenthood, it's gonna be free. We gotta get it back. We need more abortion clinics in Arlington, Texas. I'm primetime. Thank you, Mayor Ross.
Thank you, primetime. Is it okay if I call you that, sir?
Of course, yes, sir. Thank you, I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Mr. Buskin, I'm almost afraid to ask, do you have any more citizen participation?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, Lord, thank you.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for allowing me this time to speak to you today. But unfortunately, the subject that I have to speak about is very traumatic and personal to me. With the new abortion legislation brought forth by the Texas Supreme Court, allowing the heartbeat bill and limiting abortions to six weeks is incredibly unconstitutional. Bill Gates' father, William Gates Sr., would be so disappointed in his son for letting this bill pass, considering Gates' family involvement in starting Planned Parenthood with Margaret Sanger. Currently, I'm in a situation where I have three different birthing people pregnant at the same time. And I would like for all of them to have abortions. But unfortunately, with this new heartbeat bill, we're unable to get the usual abortions that we often get. I don't like to use any contraception whatsoever, because it hinders my performance. So that's why I depend on abortions as a 100% effective form of birth control. But now that the state is making it almost impossible for birthing people to even get an abortion, I'm gonna be forced to change my entire lifestyle. Roe versus Wade made it very clear that abortions are completely legal, and I wish Dallas would take a page out of New York's rulebook and approve late-term abortion up to six hours after birth, because this would solve a lot of problems for expected parents that don't wanna have the financial obligation of raising a child that they didn't plan for with money that they don't have. And although I'm perfectly capable of financially supporting a young child, and I know that I would get crazy amount of likes and comments on my TikTok and Instagram accounts from all the cool baby photos, and I could post them in Armani and Gucci baby gear, and it's very easy for me to find birthing people that want me to leave my seat inside them. But unfortunately, I don't have the time or the ability to change my vacations to Cabo San Lucas in Jamaica, because those are non-refundable flights. And I travel to many other international destinations on a regular basis, because my social media influence on Instagram is similar to that of Dan Zsuzarian or Chrissy Teigen's. But sadly, with multiple children, this could hinder my ability to travel. And I know this may sound a little selfish. But my doctor and psychiatrist both prescribed me an Eat, Pray, Love lifestyle ever since my first ex-wife and her new fiance died in a fire at her old lake house that she received in the divorce settlement. My two transgender children, my two transgender children from the divorced decade in Daleks who are both on puberty blockers, were just surrendered to Child Protective Services until I can get my drunk driving problem behind me. Because I recently got a DWI outside of the Olive Garden on Technology Boulevard after the all-you-can-eat pasta promotion they have. But regardless of all the pinot grigio and fettuccine Alfredo, I sit here in front of the mayor and city council begging that you use some of the budgetary funds to hire attorneys and file a lawsuit against Governor Abbott, just like you're suing for the mask mandate laws that are currently in place by the governor. Please do something to reverse this unjust, unconstitutional abortion ban so that I can go back to raw-dogging birthing people that I meet outside of Arby's and drug rehabilitation centers. And if you're watching this online, and you wanna smoke some sweet later and chill with me, hit my Instagram, Primetime Stein, all one word. And my Twitter, Alex99. My picture is Greta Thunberg wearing a mask, and my bio says, "Free the nipple." Thank you, thank you, Mayor Johnson. I appreciate you guys. Thank you very much. Have a good one.
Thank you.
Hey, counsel, thank you for having me. I appreciate you guys giving me my time to speak. One thing that I was a little frustrated, I believe it was Kim or somebody, said something about Planned Parenthood negatively. First of all, I work at Planned Parenthood. The job I do at Planned Parenthood is very important. Having access to abortions is literally health rights, so I don't really appreciate that, especially with the trials and tribulations that I go through going to work every day. There's always people protesting, there's people calling me all kinds of words. So it's not, it's a very thankless job with all the abortions I do. So then I have to come to a council meeting and get called out by somebody in the city? I mean, it's just ridiculous. And it sounds like some woman that listens to Joe Rogan podcasts. And that's the problem, is St. Louis is literally going the way of the McGloskis. We're turning into like this racist, anti-vax culture of people that are, you know, coming to city council and making fun of me, because I work at Planned Parenthood. You think it's easy to give eight abortions a day? You don't think that messes with my head? You don't think that affects me? And then I come here, I'm trying to talk about the serious issues in St. Louis, and I got some girl saying, "My job is bad?" Yeah, I have a nice house. Yes, I live a comfortable life. That doesn't mean it's easy, what I have to do, what I put on the line every day. And then I gotta put on the news, and this is a representation of St. Louis? And then you look at our football team, now the Rams win the Super Bowl! How much worse injury to insult? This could have been the St. Louis Rams! I can't catch any break! Ever since the third vaccine, I had, I've had issues performing. My wife has left me for a 19-year-old personal trainer named Gerardo Gutierrez, and now I'm all alone, I'm at the lowest point in my entire life. And I come on here to try to talk, to try to do my civic duty, try to make the city a better place? And what happens? Some girl will make fun of my job? That's not okay! Listen, thank God I have these cats! This is the only thing that I have left in life, is this cat! If it wasn't for this cat, what would I have? I would just have a bunch of anti-vaxxers coming at me, calling me a jerk for doing eight abortions a day! You try doing that! You try coming to my job, performing eight abortions! You can never! You would not be able to sleep at night! The dreams I have, I try to eat sometimes, and I puke, I vomit. I look in the mirror, I'm disgusted with who I've become. And I gotta come here, and I gotta take crap from some girl named Kim? What are you Eminem's mom? This is not okay! Our city is totally losing, look at Kansas City! They've won like five Super Bowls! And what do we got? All we got is the McGloskis with their gun, making national news, going on Tucker Carlson. So I can come here, and I gotta get called a murderer? Well, let me tell you something, I'm not a murderer. A clump of cells is not alive. A fetus is not alive, okay? And so what? We sell some of those body parts. Whoop-dee-doo! We need it! Celebrities love facial cream with the foreskins of babies. It's some of the most expensive cream that we offer in all of the lotions that are supplied. I supply that. That is a big, part of my business. It's Primetime Stein on Instagram, if you guys wanna find anything more. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joel Harrell, followed by Jason Moore.
Seeing none?
Nope.
Oh, someone?
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, so my name's Alex Stein. I live at 69 Waverly.
I'm sorry, what was your last name?
Stein, S-T-E-I-N.
Okay, thank you.
And the reason why I'm calling in, I just saw another district now is providing litter boxes for a student that identifies as a cat. And my daughter Lily identifies as a lizard. And everybody's getting so mad, because I wanna put a terrarium in the classroom. They're looking at me like I'm crazy. I understand, we're not gonna put the temperature at 85 degrees, like the other students would not like that. But a small accommodation, like a terrarium, for my daughter would be very simple, very, very simple thing to do. When you look at other districts that are, I mean, going, think about what we do for the special education.
Excuse me, Mr. Stein? Excuse me? If you have an individual request for your child, that's something that you could call the, the school or the superintendent with?
It's a district request, because I shouldn't have to, the whole district should accommodate her, because it's teachers, it's a lot of people won't even respect her, what she identifies as.
That's...
It's a whole district issue. Do you see what I'm saying? It's not, it's not an individual thing, it's a whole issue with the district. Is that, yes, I understand, I don't like that my daughter identifies as a lizard. I try to tell her not to. It's the worst thing ever.
Mr. Stein, well, I will have Dr. Villanueva will, will get, will reach out to you?
It's the problem, though, when you guys don't support it, you won't put the terrarium in there. The more you kick back with a young girl like that, you know she's gonna kick back even harder. And that's the problem, that's why it's on the district. Listen, I get it, the teacher, we're not gonna put the temperature at 85 degrees in the room.
Thank you.
A simple glass box for her to sit in.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. And Dr. Villanueva will reach out to you for that, for that request. Thank you.
Just for student confidentiality, I'll reach out to you individually. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else from the virtual audience that would like to address the board this evening?
Thank you for being here this morning, we appreciate it. Next up is item 181. Next individual, please.
Request Mohammed Atahaya to address counsel regarding sanctuary city for refugees.
Good morning, Mohammed.
Hello, Mayor Tervilla. I want to say, on behalf of Taliban, that you are the best mayor in United States of America. In other cities, law enforcement makes it tough for us to operate. But luckily, in Portland, the mayor actually supports the right of Taliban. Our experience in cities like New York and Los Angeles have been rife with law enforcement and governmental issues. But in Portland, we are able to distribute our poppy to the people of Portland. Currently, the number one place in America that we export all of our Afghani poppy is to Portland. As Taliban member, I promise to give the citizens of Portland the cleanest rain known to man. We understand that Pfizer has the vaccine taken care of so. Thank you, Mayor Tervilla, for letting the Taliban sell our poppy to your people without getting in trouble. To all my other comrades that are watching this, remember, Andy Ngo is the worst person ever. And Portland is the only place where racism is no longer exist. You are able to sell your poppy or smoke your methamphetamine or park your broken-down car on the streets of our month at time, without any interference.
Dylan, can we move to the next person? I don't think we need to hit, sit here and listen to a racial parody. This is deeply offensive, and you should be ashamed.
We know that.
This is absolutely racist behavior on your part. Shame on you. Next individual, please, item number 182.
Request Portland advocates for lead-free drinking water to address counsel regarding lead-reducing water filters.
Mahalo, Iini. Next, we will have Alex Stein, I believe, and then after him will be Brandon Lee. You can unmute yourself.
Aloha, thank you for having me, guys. I'm calling from Dallas, Texas. I wanna tell you guys, really, the mayor should be ashamed of yourselves. I got injured on the YPO Valley Access Road on my honeymoon. We were staying at the Hilton Grand Vacations on the Time Share. And what was supposed to be the best vacation or the best trip of my life with my wife ended up being the biggest nightmare of my life. We got hit by a rock, and I'll be honest, I had been drinking, I had been doing some other stuff. I ended up getting charged with a DUI, and I also had some cartilage damage on my left side. While I was in jail, my wife, not knowing anybody, trying to call bail bonds and trying to get me out of jail, somehow the tow truck driver takes her back to my hotel, ends up having an affair. She ends up, ends up ruining our whole marriage. Now her and I are going through a total legal battle that I, I could potentially lose everything.
This meeting is specific to the road closure.
Yeah, this is why, because you, yeah, because your, your bad roads is the reason why I got hit. No, listen, this isn't the first time y'all have had an accident on this road. And because, because of your bad roads, that's why this happened. And because, because of your bad roads, that's why this happened. So I don't want to be muted. I don't want to be cut off. I want my two minutes to talk. I need my two minutes. Quit muting me. You guys should be ashamed of yourselves. You guys are a bunch of dumb Hawaiians, don't even know how to fix the road. You guys are all a bunch of idiots. You guys don't even know how to fix the road. You got people hitting it, and now you're driving down the road, you gotta close it because you guys are all a bunch of imbeciles, and you don't even know how to drive down the street. You don't even have streets that...
........................................................................... Hello, council. My name's Primetime99AlexStein, and I have a little presentation for you today. I have a little audio accompaniment. But I just want to, I want to take a moment to think about the people of Ukraine and what they're going through. So I prepared a little song for them. Let me turn this on. I really want to try to help the people out there. Okay, guys? So, let me just get it going. They call me Primetime99AlexStein. I hope you guys like my flavor. Come on. Primetime99, on the grind all the time. Go insane for Ukraine. Put a bullet in Putin's brain. I'm Primetime, always on the grind, always got a shot. And you know it's no lie. What, oh, excuse me. Come on, audio. Where are we going? Now we're going, now we're going, guys. I gotta turn down a little bit. It's primetime. Let's start that one more time, guys. Come on, the audience. Let's go hot tonight. Primetime, always already know I'm on the grind. You got flashin' too high. Putin, check it out. Put a bullet in Putin's head. And that's what I said. I'm free, bullet matchin'. But it ain't my body, that's the money. Shit for the party. I'm a fool, one of them move, spit on the mic. Who's in the back? Who can't talk? All them blacks. Who did this? A bad racist. One of them brown, white or brown. And I'm in, ain't no town. And you know you just got found. I'm pimp, on the grind. You lost your state and trap. This can't stop my show. I'm Primetime99. And you know I'm ready to shine. And you know I do it all the time. One more time, I'm teaching class. This is your home class. Little Linsky, it can be a B. You prank and I go insane. Put a bullet in Putin's brain. You know that is the plan. I'm a little Linsky stand. I love you. Black men, little Linsky. You are so smart. What's your sound? Didn't show them by the bar? No, what? What can you say? But it ain't me straight or gay. I love you, and I love you. Right and right all the time. And you got that sanitizer. And you know I got that fizer. You know I spitting in my bag. Put a bullet in Putin's brain. Do it for them, Ukraine. Before I go insane, let me antibiotics your body. I'm the party, shit for the party. You love us all. And I am a pimp. Just I am on the grind. You lost your state and trap. One more time, I'm primetime. And you know I'm ready to shine. That's why she's way too hot. Black men, Putin, hit you down. That's why she's way too hot. Black men, hit you down. I'm a fool, in the mood. Take a picture. I'm a winner. I'ma eat you for dinner. Okay. That's what I say. I love you. We need to take out a lot of our people. Like Lindsey Graham said, thank you, Mayor Monson. Appreciate the time. Peace. God bless you all. Primetime99 on Instagram. Thank you. We got you now. We got you now.
That's it? Yeah. Thank you.
Speaker is Brian Wallington.
Mayor Monz, it's Primetime99. I'm back, but I'm not doing good today. I recently lost my job at Bowman Middle School. Plano ISD let me go. The first administrative infraction is I got in trouble for making, well, let's just put it this way. I thought it'd be important to teach kids at middle school CRT, Critical Race Theory. Because if people don't realize being white is one of the biggest problems that our country is facing is white supremacy. So I really want to make sure these young kids feel as guilty as possible. And so what I did was, I made the white students pick cotton. And they said that that was inappropriate, and that I was on an administrative watch. And then listen to this, Mayor Monz. Follow me. And so I get distracted with Anthony Riccadelli. Anthony, you're my favorite council member. You remind me of my, my ex-boyfriend Rodrigo. You guys both are built similar. Very handsome. Listen, is that funny that my boyfriend? See, this is bigoted. This is what I deal with all the time, Mayor Monz. And then listen to this. Oh, oh, listen to the new mask policy at Bowman Middle School. So I go in there, and I put on my typical mask, and they said, oh, that mask is inappropriate. It's too distracting. Let me ask you this, Mayor Monz. Please explain to me how this mask at all is distracting when I'm literally trying to protect these kids from COVID, okay? And they're trying to say that this mask is inappropriate. Sorry, my husband, he's gonna get so mad if I'm speaking in my human voice. He's gonna make me sit in the kennel all week. But they're trying to say that this mask is inappropriate for students. I'm trying to protect myself from COVID. I got five vaccines, but everybody knows a vaccine is not enough, all right? So I'm out here, I'm barking every day, and these students, I'm trying to bark at these students, I'm trying to teach them something. I want them to learn. I want them to know that we live in a world of inclusivity, and we need to be more inclusive. I'm a pimp on a blip, but they try to look at me weird because I have this mask on. What's wrong with this mask? You know you like this mask? Everybody likes this mask. I'm in here trying to protect myself from COVID, and I'll be honest, it's not easy to breathe. Sometimes I have to open it up like this. And they're trying to say, oh, this isn't, this is not good for spreading the virus. Let me tell you something, it's not about the virus. We have a mind virus. The city of Plano is not gay enough. And as a gay icon myself, we need to do more to make this city gayer and more inclusive. And that's why I think we need to have sex education for children as young as nine. We need to have sex education for children eight years old. We need sex education at birth. Like, as soon as they come out, we need to show a fetus. This is how you are here. 20 seconds. Well, let me just say, Mayor Monz, I need my job back. I was fired for wearing this mask. And my boyfriend Rodrigo, my future husband, my fiance, I'm sorry I use my human voice, please, please don't make me sleep in the kennel tonight. I love you so much. And Anthony Riccadelli, you're the most handsome council member I've ever seen in my life. I love you guys. Thank you so much. See you guys on the other side.
Thank you, Representative Green. Excuse me, any additional questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Danic. We'll move on to our next speaker, who is Edgar Lindsay. You have three minutes.
Thank you, guys, so much. I just want to start off by saying, normally, I'm all about defunding the police. I don't think the police, I'm ACAB, I believe all cops are bastards. But this is the situation that I'm in. This is why we gotta get the hate. We have to figure out a jurisdiction on violating, people that violate hate crimes. Because my wife's boyfriend has been calling me gay, has been calling me bisexual, has been, has been treating me absolutely terrible, the worst hate crimes ever. My wife's boyfriend has posted pictures that my wife took of me on the internet in a very unflattering way. I'm spread open, I'm very embarrassed. This is a hate crime. This is a sexual hate crime. He doesn't like me because I'm impotent ever since I got the vaccine. So he calls me gay. I'm not a gay man. Is this a hate crime? I think any crime based out of not love is a hate crime. So we have two crimes. We got hate crimes, and we got love crimes. Love crimes like credit card fraud. Hate, hate crimes, taking pictures of my genitals and posting it on internet forums of people that I work with causing me to lose my job. So because of this, because you guys, all you bureaucrats up there, you fat cats, oh, you're so smart. I'm in Connecticut, I'm gonna make the rules. Well, let me tell you something. Like I said, I want to normally defund these police. I don't want them to have five cents. But if you're gonna make their job harder by creating a hate crime unit, I'm excited.
Mr. Lindsay, if you could dial down your tone a little, please.
Okay, I'm sorry. I apologize. I apologize. What I'm saying is, I'm so happy for this hate crime because I want you guys to make these cops' jobs as hard as possible. Every cop is an imbecile. Every cop with a badge and a gun is really an evil, evil person. They go around and they, they arrest you for a speeding ticket. They arrest you if you run a stop sign and you have warrants for your arrest. They arrest you if you're on fentanyl. They arrest you if you have a drug overdose. They will literally arrest the other people in the house. So these cops are evil. So I beg you guys, you politicians, please do whatever you can to make their job as hard as possible. They obviously don't want it. You see those cops in the car? They're like, oh, don't do it, don't do it. Because they know you're gonna make their job harder. So please help me out. Please help my wife's boyfriend go to jail for the hate crimes that he committed against you because I want to bring attention to this because we gotta make every cop's life terrible. Any cop that has a badge is a bad person, and they don't deserve to have a job. They're the absolute worst people. So we gotta, we gotta fund the police by making their jobs harder. So give them money so we can create the hate crimes division. Because I really want to make their lives so much harder. And I want to arrest my wife's boyfriend because those pictures he posted me on the internet. And listen, listen, I willingly took those pictures, but I didn't give him permission. I didn't spread open for him to go and, you know, for him to go.
Senator Ross, hang on a second, Mr. Lindsay.
Mr. Lindsay, calm down a little bit, and then I think his three minutes is up.
Yeah, what's up, Senator? See, you, you always try to stifle me. You know, you're the one that, I'm happy though, Senator.
Mr. Lindsay, I'm chairing this meeting, so direct it to me, please.
Oh, what I'm saying is, I'm happy you guys, she's all mad, but you guys, I want you guys to make that hate crime unit because you guys are gonna make the cops' lives. So I'm on y'all's side, even though y'all are annoying bureaucrats and you guys sit there.
Mr. Lindsay, do you have anything further to add?
Yes, this is what I want to say is, we need to arrest my wife's boyfriend for a hate crime. I'm asking y'all for help. So please, make these cops' lives much harder because every cop does not deserve any happiness. Because if they choose a lifestyle to protect and serve by arresting people, then they're a bad person. Like they say, ACABs, you know, Antifa for life. And this is the future, guys. We're the future. I'm a young kid. I'm the future. All you guys are gonna be dead.
Mr. Lindsay, thank you. Your three minutes is up. And my apologies for any offense that anyone may have taken to his comments. Representative DJ MacCarlo, do you have a
Yeah, is he still on?
Uh, no, he's not.
Okay. I would have loved to ask him a question, but I will, I will pass now. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Howard?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the opportunity. I understand he's not here anymore, but I feel compelled to just speak on behalf of thousands of law enforcement officers in this state. That does not represent my opinion. It does not represent the opinions of my colleagues on this committee, on the Republican Caucus. And I think it was disgraceful that that individual was given three minutes to just simply disparage an entire profession that way. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Representative Howard. We will move on to our next speaker.
99 Live from Capella City Council. We don't even know what we're gonna say, but Unc's gonna speak, and then I'm just gonna reinforce whatever he says, sir. See him? He's an ex-convict. He accidentally murdered somebody, vehicular manslaughter.
Everybody, I'm locked in a firm and I'm stuck in a simulation.
Name and address, please.
Oh, yeah. My name? I'm from the Paroma. That's like in the heavens. It's like the same as heaven, but it's different. And I came to talk about Trump because I love Trump, and y'all disrespect the Trump, and y'all don't know that y'all devils, and y'all come from the devils. Y'all fell from heaven. And y'all don't know that Trump is good. He blacked stuck in another body because the world of simulation and everything is being coronated. Oh, sorry. Everything is being coronated. And I got some papers I need y'all to sign because I'm trying to let everybody know that Michelle Obama is a man. Her, her name is Michael, and don't nobody know. But this right here, if y'all can help me sign this, we can kind of like get a gender reveal. Because she's a man. I mean, he's a man. It's kind of like a he/she. But it's different. But I need to get out the firmament, and I need to get to Antarctica. So I need you guys to help me get to Antarctica too, right? Because y'all blocking me from Antarctica. And you doing it for sure because you know you fell from the heavens, and I can look at you and tell that you are Nathalie on, Nathalie on. You, 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 you're a devil. You're a devil. Louie Chappell on. And Hillary Clinton's stupid. And Bill Clinton did inhale that weed. He said he didn't, but he did. I know he did. Because who smoke weed and don't inhale? And that's all. Thank you, guys, for having me. I love you, guys. America, make America great again. Put up the wall.
I love you. You love me. Bring Warty back! Our next speaker is Mr. Alex Stein.
What's up? What's going on, guys? Sorry, I'm, right now, I'm debating some libtard about Donald Trump. Get your cup. What? All right. So, hey, Mayor. Thank you, guys, for having me. Everything's going good in Capella.
Name and address, please.
Oh, my name's Alex Stein, 7509 Inwood Road. What you just saw, though, is the first black man, I believe, to ever come to this council and ask for what he asked for. And I looked at your face, and some of you guys, I didn't know if I was at a city council meeting or a Klan rally. I mean, some of the way y'all looked at that African-American, y'all looked at him as less sane. And I don't think that's cool. I don't look at that man as less sane. I look at him better than me. And that's why I feel like we should treat, you know, people that are underprivileged like him. You see him? He's an ex-convict. He accidentally murdered somebody, vehicular manslaughter. And a lot of people, they want to say, oh, he murdered somebody, he's a bad person. Not me. I think we should look at a murderer and give them the same respect. You know, if they paid their dues, they paid their, you know, social justice, their, their crime to society, then they should be a free man. And I'll be honest, like, Unc is, he has some serious issues. I caught him looking at some websites, not illegal websites, just weird websites of drawings of My Little Pony in a sexual manner, and I did not think that was okay. And so I reported him to the police for that. And we're having issues with the police and law enforcement in Capella not arresting him for that because that My Little Pony brony stuff is not good. So with all that being said, right now, we're in Capella, in the greatest city in America. You saw, Capella got rated the best city in America. Did you see this, Mayor? Yes, you did. For the people playing at home, Capella did get rated the best city. Why? Because it's mainly white people that aren't gonna rob you and aren't gonna kill you. And is that, you know, is that a real statement? I don't know. I'll let you be the judge of that. But we look at our crime stats, you look at our demographics of the city, and I'll tell you what, it's safe as hell. So I'm happy that Capella's a city where I don't have to worry about a Venezuelan trinderruga gangbanger coming over here and trying to manipulate me or do something to my girlfriend or do something to my ex-wife, Deborah. I don't have to worry about that at all because Capella is a safe city. And the only criticism I have is you guys could have treated Unc with a little more respect. He is a black guru. His son was murdered and, I believe, was sacrificed to the Illuminati. So he's a very powerful guy. He's connected to the rapper Nelly, I'm sure. And he does not like Kanye West, so don't worry, we're not making trouble with that. No, no swastika situation with Unc. He's very pro-Israel. I think he's Jewish, actually. He's a black Hebrew Israelite. So with all that being said, I just want to say that Donald Trump is the greatest president. And you know who's the greatest mayor? You, Mayor West. You're one of the nicest guys. You're bedside manner. And listen, you got a ragtag bunch. You got to deal with all these councilmen. I know Mike, the city manager, is always giving you hell, and you're sending these emails. You're like, Mike, I'm the mayor. And he's like, I'm the city manager. You're the real boss, and you make this city great. And that's why the cowgirls and the cowboys of Capella are such great, fine, young people. God bless this city, and God bless you, and God bless Donald Trump. Thank you.
How do you feel about the city council meeting?
Um, it's good. They gonna unlock the front. Yeah. Uh, listen, midget dancing is good. Midget porn is good. That's where I'm at. Yeah.
Am I painting an extreme example, extreme hypothetical, maybe this is, but let me tell you my experience on Sunday, February 2nd going up.
My bathroom, you?
Yeah, there's a...
Yeah, there sure is.
Whole parking lots full. Whole pavilions full. I mean, it's clearly an organized event.
Our second speaker is Mr. Alex Stein. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Alex Stein, and I'm a citizen of the earth. I live in the North American region. And I just want to say, I came here not that long ago, Mayor West. Remember talking about the Cowboys before the season started and what happened? They didn't make the playoffs. They stunk like usual. I just want to bring that up. But I also want to give a shout out. We got a lot of good things happening. We got to give a shout out to my boy RFK Jr. That's right. He's been taking this methylene blue. Are you familiar with this, Mayor West? This stuff is good stuff. Let me tell you something. They, this like, this stuff will just make you, make you young again. Now, it is kind of dying, and it'll make your teeth a little blue. But RFK takes this, and let me tell you something, Cheryl Hines, there's a reason she's not married to Larry David in real life. It's because of that. RFK, you know what the F stands for, and it's not Fitzgerald. But I came here for a serious thing. Very serious thing. I'm not even kidding. You might have saw this, but a congressman from the state of Texas by the name of Dan Crenshaw just called for the assassination of my biological stepfather, Tucker Carlson. Now, this might be funny, but to me, it's not funny. And you guys, as elected officials, should try to, I guess, expose this because I don't think it's very cool that a sitting congressman would say that he wants somebody dead, especially a celebrity that has a lot of influence and a lot of fans. So I think, you know, morally, that would be unjust to kill somebody, period. But to kill somebody that has, you know, an adoring audience is absolutely sick. And if you look at Dan Crenshaw, he's an alcoholic, he's a dwarf, he's, you know, five foot six, he has one eye, and it's not even that good, the one that he has left. And listen, I respect that he lost his eye serving this country. And I respect every man and woman in uniform. But the idea that he went and found weapons of mass destruction, which he didn't, and that he still wants to go send kids to go fight in a war like Ukraine for literally nothing, and I think they're gonna come to an agreement here by April, that the, first agreement that they pitch the first week of this war is gonna end up being the outcome. So it's all BS. Dan Crenshaw is a globalist. He does not care about this country, and he cannot attack my biological stepfather, Tucker Carlson. That is not okay with me. Tucker's done a lot for me. He's helped my family. He's helped this country. And Tucker speaks for the common person. He speaks, even though he is a wealthy man, he speaks for the middle class, believe it or not. And Dan Crenshaw is a guy that's inherited money, and now he's inherited the power and knowledge, and he's... is a guy that's inherited money, and now he's inherited the power and knowledge, and he's able to stalk trade, and he's doing all kinds of stuff in Congress that is absolutely aberrant, apparent, I, you know what I mean, bad. But my point is this. You need to, Mayor, blow the whistle on this. I don't think it's cool that Dan Crenshaw, probably drunk, allegedly cheats on his wife. I don't know if that's true, but I just talked to girls that said that they did stuff. A lot of girls say they do stuff, and, you know, they're full of it. But my point is, Dan Crenshaw calling for the assassination of Tucker Carlson is not cool. And I know Dan's watching this. Dan, I just want to say, you're a little baby back biatch. And if you try to mess with freaking Tucker Carlson, uh, you're not gonna like how it ends. And all your Navy SEAL training is gonna get thrown out the door, a little Danny Boy Crenshaw. So Mayor West, please, uh, you know, expose this. Thank you very much, and I appreciate you guys, uh, your time.
Thank you for your comments this evening.
Okay, this guy's, this guy's, hey, Mayor, who is this guy? He keeps on following us around.
Mayor, I'd like to call the point of order.
Yeah, you are, I know, but what is your problem, Wes?
Uh, can we, can we handle this? This is interrupting the meeting.
No, but, no, but this guy's, no, Mayor West, my girlfriend's standing over here. He goes and walks. I know what you're saying. Dude, it's not your job to go walk around my girlfriend like a freaky old man. Like, sit down and watch the meeting, dude. Like, I know, but you see, you see how he's walking around?
He's sitting down.
Yeah, no, but don't threaten my girlfriend. I don't give a damn how old you are, trying to stand in front of a little girl. You're pathetic. Yeah, hey, I'll, I'll talk all I want, you old man, and, and I'll be at your funeral, too. I'm a coward. I'm right here. Walk away from what? Baldy? What are you gonna do, bald-headed boy? What are you gonna do? You gonna cry about Israel some more? I know, but he's sitting here crying about, uh, people wearing masks?
Thank you, everybody, for your patience tonight.
Was he in your face, or?
He was standing right, he was literally standing right here next to me.
Please state your name and address.
Hello. Hello, my name's Alex Stein. I live at 2101 East 13th, and I recently moved to this great community, Clearwater, from Fort Worth, Texas. I work for an ammo shop there called KIR Ammo. I got fired for accidentally selling ammunition to an illegal immigrant, and so my life got turned upside down. I had a good job, moved out here, didn't have a lot of prospects, started cleaning pools, okay? And there's a lot of opportunity in that business here in Clearwater. It's a great place, and I've really enjoyed it. It's very, uh, stress-free lifestyle compared to Texas, you know what I mean? It's very nice in Clearwater. I love this community. And I started working at this house, really nice house. I don't want to say the address near here. And I started cleaning the pool, and I became friends with a woman that was living there in the back house. And they seemed like they were going through something, you know, like they seemed like they were, like, going through, you know, the, an emotional tough time. And I started to kind of be there for them. And they told me their name was Sarah, and so, you know, I knew her as Sarah, and our relationship, it snowballed, you know? It went from professional relationship to a very carnal relationship. And, um, some things happened, and we ended up, um, making love, and she was married. She was married. And come to find out, she's married to a very powerful man in this community. His name's David Miscavige. And the woman that I was sleeping with is Shelley Miscavige. And she, right now, is scared for her life, hiding. And she has my baby inside of her uterus right now. She's pregnant with my baby. And now they want to get an abortion. Do you understand that? So I'm here in this community, begging you to stop David Miscavige from killing the baby in Shelley Miscavige's womb. And on top of all that, she's post-menopausal. And through the power of Xenu, the Galactic Overlord, who's health Scientologist, we were able to have this baby. This baby could be the Jesus of Scientology. It could be the L. Ron Hubbard's breed of Scientology. How did a post-menopausal woman get pregnant by my seed? I'll tell you how, L. Ron Hubbard. So, we love this community, but I don't love women like Shelley being scared with my baby. So I'm asking you, the council here in Clearwater, please protect my baby. I'm anti-abortion. And Shelley would tell me stories about how, when she would make love to David, they could only do it if they were watching Top Gun, and they had the volume fully high. And she told me some sick stuff about Scientology, about how they excommunicated people, and I'm sick of it. So Clearwater's a beautiful place, but it is infected with a disease, and that disease is Scientology. So please do not let David Miscavige touch my baby. We are gonna name it L. Ron, but that's, that's neither here nor there. It's gonna be L. Ron Stein, not L. Ron Miscavige. So David, I know you're watching this. Give me my baby back and let Shelley free! All right? Let Shelley free! Thank you.
Does anyone else have any, or anyone address to the board that's not on today's agenda?
And this city is so beautiful city. I contribute so many hours on the volunteer times. I have been surrounded by Scientologists. I am a Scientologist for the last forty years. I know the roots of Scientology, and everything is to help humankind. What the guy says is a completely lie. We are the benefit here in Clearwater to have this here organization, and you guys know with uniforms. That is the more ethical organization in this planet. They never, any one of the CR members is gonna deal with any civilians in any sexual relation. What he says is completely true. That's the team that is making us, this city, so beautiful. We take care of so many volunteer hours for human rights. We protect the children. We protect the humanity. We care about other people, and we love people, and we want everything good for everybody. That's all what I say. Thank you. I will continue with the agenda.
Good evening, honorable council members of Flower Mountain. I am Primetime 99 Alex Stein, your prophet of truth and assesible of cosmic lies, and I stand before you, trembling with righteous fury, to expose the intergalactic abomination that threatens our souls. You've all seen the media attention of Jeff Bezos's Blue Origin space mission last week, but I'm here to rip the veil off this satanic charade. A phallic-shaped rocket, a throbbing monument to Bezos's ego, carrying a coven of space harlots.
Whoa, 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 that's amazing.
Lesbian pop star icon Katy Perry, Oprah's secret lover Gayle King, and Jeff's AI-programmed sex puppet, Lauren Sanchez. And that's hard for me to say because I love big booty Latinas, but it's true. These Jezebels didn't go to space. They staged a blasphemous ritual in the firmament to mock God and harvest our despair, and tightened Bezos's chokehold on humanity's spirit, all to outshine Elon Musk in their billionaire blood feud. I've studied every space mission since the Nazis slithered over here in Operation Paperclip to fake the Apollo landings. And those swastika-loving freaks at least had the decency to wear bulky spacesuits with kooky boots, because Hitler worshipped footwear even more than he worshipped large ovens. But listen, I digress. But these Blue Origin bimbos, they pranced in spacesuits with plunging necklines, cleavage-defying gravity like an OnlyFans livestream from hell. Women belong in the kitchens, not the cosmos. And I'm sorry if that's disrespectful, but excuse my truth. But I'd rather keep our big booty Latinas earthbound than deport them to this demonic farce. This isn't a mission. It's black magic. It's a sex ritual, a cosmic orgy to siphon our Amazon Prime paychecks and bottle our hopelessness in a jar for Bezos's pentagram-shaped boardroom. Last week, I screamed this truth at the Grapevine City Council. She kissed a girl, and she likes it. I mean, Mayor Tate, I, I don't want a bunch of lesbians. And the people roared in agreement, their eyes open to the Illuminati's playbook, to the sheeple, like some of you. It was just a couple girl bosses soaring to the stars. But in reality, it was a blood-soaked sacrifice to Moloch. And now, the proof is undeniable. That's right. Listen to me, follow me. This is the proof. This is the proof. This morning, the Vatican announced Pope Francis's death at 3:46 AM Eastern. How much time do I have left?
Thirty seconds.
Eastern, exactly six days, six hours, and six minutes after the Blue Origins rocket landed on April 14th at 9:40 AM. Six, six, six. Do you hear the devil's laughter, council? This isn't coincidence. It's a calculated murder. Those space succubi with their glittery claws snuffed out the Pope's holy light to fuel Bezos's quest for global domination with his bald head gleaming.
All right, your three minutes are up. No, your three minutes are up, sir.
One less thing, it's like his bald head gleaming like.
No, sir. I said your three minutes are up. Your three minutes are up. Thank you.
We'll have heaven.
Thank you, Mayor. My name's Alex Stein. I am here tonight because we're in Grapevine. You guys are very familiar, obviously, DFW Airport. And I am a commercial airline pilot for Spirit Airlines. And I'm freaking, I'm just, I'm a little frustrated because if you turn on the TV, all I'm seeing is a bunch of bimbos in space.
The moon. You guys, I have to tell you, look at the moon.
That's right. They're sending, uh, uh, Lauren Sanchez and Oprah Winfrey's, uh, uh, I don't even know what. Oprah Winfrey's lesbian lover, I guess, to space. And I just think that that is absolutely ridiculous. It's a waste of resources. Me flying, I'm in the aerospace industry, and I don't want to try to land my plane and worry about, uh, you know, running into some woman with, you know, silicone breasts or something like that. I mean, I, I mean, listen, are they sending them up to space to try to test the effects of Ozempic on what it does to you in a zero-gravity environment? I don't know, but I know that it looks fake, and I'm not saying the Earth is flat, but I'll tell you this much, that originally, we went to the moon. Uh, it was done by a bunch of Nazis, a guy by the name of Warner von Braun, who was brought over during a thing called Operation Paperclip. So I don't want to go to space with a bunch of bimbos and Nazis when, uh, we got a bunch of problems here in America, especially in Grapevine, that we need solved. I mean, damn, Grapevine, those malls is one of the most empty malls in America, a, and it should be one of the most full malls considering that the, you know, uh, financial makeup of this city is pretty affluent. So listen, I'm sick of these big-breasted women going to space, wasting our money, and they're wearing these form-fitted suits. Why do you need to show cleavage? Does that make any sense? You don't even need to show cleavage. So none of this really makes sense. Uh, you know, it's a bunch of Nazis. You got Katy Perry talking about how she kissed a girl, and she likes it. I mean, Mayor Tate, I, I don't want a bunch of lesbians in space, you know what I mean? And, and I've lost custody of my kids because my ex-wife, Tanya, is trying to transition Max into Maxine. So, uh, I'm going through a lot of personal struggles, and I've, I've been clean and sober for 14 years. But I'll be honest, I've been listening to a little bit of Kanye West music, and I've been huffing nitrous oxide because that does not show up on my drug test. So I've been flying these planes, high on nitrous oxide, and I guess maybe I'm here to tell on myself because I don't want to be responsible for a catastrophic incident. And a lot of people worried about the pilot being African American. Well, you just better hope your pilot's not high on laughing gas like Kanye West. I think that's the most important thing. So with all that being said, let's try to protect our airspace here in Grapevine and the DFW area, and we don't need a bunch of bimbos in space acting, uh, like God knows what. You know what I mean? Thank you.
Anyone else?
No, Your Honor.
All right, that completes citizen comments.
Didn't hear you. Excuse me. Typical, I'm always a little bit late. You know how I operate. All right, folks, where's my timer?
I have it up here, and I'll, whenever you start talking, I'll set the timer, and you'll hear the, the bell whenever three minutes is up.
All right, guys, well, my name's Primetime 99 Alex Stein, and I'm sick and tired of this police force, the Dallas Police Department. You have a guy, a 14-year veteran, a sergeant by the name of Arturo Martinez, that thinks it's really cute and cool to say that the assassin that shot Donald Trump should aim better? And I think it's freaking disgusting that we have a police force, people that, it put, look at these guys. Look at these cowards. You guys think it's okay to say, "Oh, we should aim better"? Isn't he one of your brothers?
Excuse me. Excuse me.
Address me. Address me.
Listen here, Grandma. I can, I can come up here and say what I need to say.
Do not yell.
Why are you yelling then?
Hey, excuse me, Mr. Stein, uh, this is, uh, not appropriate. It's not under the conduct. Can you, uh, can you please speak with kind of some respect, and please only address me as the chair?
Okay, okay. I'll have some respect, but I'm very frustrated because I don't think it's very respectful.
Speak to me, please. Do not speak to the officers.
I don't think it's respectful for a Dallas police officer, 14-year sergeant, to say that an assassin should have aimed better when they tried to kill the 45th President of the United States, Donald Trump. I want a police force that doesn't put their politics first, that has a brain, unlike some of these people in this room. And that's what's so disgusting, is that we got a city out there, you have multiple people out there smoking fentanyl, smoking crack, as I walked in here, as I walked in here, people smoking drugs out there at City Hall. You guys aren't gonna arrest them. But the Dallas Police Force, they got enough time to go out there and tweet, "Oh, oh, I think the assassin, I think the assassin should have aimed better." Yeah, well, it's not funny to me. I don't think it's very funny at all because I put my safety in these officers' hands. That's their job, is to protect us, to protect a president. And, and we're in Dallas, where JFK was assassinated. So there's a little more scrutiny that is upon us as a city because we were the last city to have a president assassinated. But see, that's the problem. This city is all about race and gender. You probably don't like me because I'm coming out here and calling out a guy because he's Hispanic and probably likes illegal immigration. I don't know his politics, but I know that he wants the president to die, and I think that he should not be a part of the Dallas Police Force. And of course, the, the chief, Eddie Garcia, doesn't have the balls to come in here and face us man-to-man. And that's what's so pathetic. You guys call this the Police Oversight Commission? I see a couple police. I see a bunch of people that are not qualified to stop what's actually happening in this city. You know, I don't like having my car broken into, all right? And you guys tax us out. You know, the money that I pay in taxes in this city is ridiculous. And what does it go to? So Mayor Johnson can go cheat on his wife. So, uh, Chief Garcia can get another tattoo.
Squeeze about police. Just talk, talk to us, please.
Yeah, well, I'm saying, the, the police are under the mayor's jurisdiction. So I'm sick and tired of living in a place where I gotta live in fear that there might be a police force that might want our president dead. So if our police force won't protect the president, why would they protect me? Why should I have any hope or faith in our law enforcement if they think it's so cool to go on social media and type "aim better"? That's disgusting. We almost had the world changed in an instant.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Stein. Your time is up. I appreciate you being here.
Okay, well, I mean, it's funny that this woman just, you know, interrupted me the whole time.
Hey, your time is up. Thank you so much.
You guys need to do, do better. You heard me.
Alex, that looked awesome. We actually just kept your feed because it was better.
Mr. Stein, have, have you filed a complaint with?
I did file a complaint. I filed a complaint with the Northwest Police Division, and I posted the video online. I can send you a copy of that video of me filing the complaint.
But have you filed a written complaint with the Office of Police account, uh, oversight?
I actually did send them an email, but I actually filed a police report with the Northwest Division that's right at Northwest Highway next to Bachman Lake. I went in.
I don't know that that'll properly get it to our jurisdiction. If you want to fill out and sign a complaint online, that'll put it in front of the office.
Okay, I'll, I'll get that done ASAP.
Next, we have Dinell Lane. Uh, Dinell Lane, we'd love to invite you, uh, forward if you have any comments. Okay, you declined this time. Thank you for being here, Mr. Lane. We appreciate it. Um, and, uh, the last, uh, in-person that we have is... Uh, John, John Tent King? Oh, John Tent King. Thank you for being here, Mr. King. And, uh, whenever you begin, we'll begin your three minutes. And, uh, when you hear the bell, please respect, uh, the three-minute timeline. Thank you so much.
First off, uh, my pronouns are keen and empore, so don't get that confused, okay? Um, you know, it's kind of sad to watch you guys almost become like the city called Portland. You guys are all becoming meth heads, crack heads, all the way around out in Dallas. You know, Dallas used to have a name for itself. Now you guys is kind of becoming just like a knockoff of Portland, you know? Oh, by the way, I'm running for city council in Bend, Oregon, so make sure you guys vote for me if you're watching this in Bend, Oregon. But you guys really should stop what you guys are doing. Like, Mayor Johnson, you know, he's a dodgy. If you go back to the Bible, I'm sure Jesus Christ wouldn't be approving of his actions.
Hey, Mr. King, uh, please don't talk about anyone disrespectfully.
No, 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 no. I wasn't talking badly. I was just stating some facts. I think you misunderstood, you know? It's just facts. Uh, Jesus would have not approved of that at all. You know, he didn't approve of a dodgy. You know, it's not a, it's not a thing you should be doing in the Bible. Um, I don't know if you guys even listened to the young lady that was down here a little bit ago. You guys, these police officers would be boning the elderly lady here instead of stopping the crackheads outside and the meth heads and helping the homeless people. Those police officers would enjoy to bone older ladies on their arms. They, they got, she has videos of these police officers, of all the abuse they have done to her. Is that what you guys like doing, abusing elderly ladies? Is that what you guys get off on? Abusing old ladies? No? Anyone? No? Okay, okay. I didn't think so. But maybe you guys should stop abusing elderly ladies, you know? Oh, my goodness. Oh. Mixo, every one of you guys, if you guys are watching this, go watch Fist Tank Live, Season 3. Go watch Ice Beside its Hunger Games stream, guys. It's gonna be placed in Austin, Texas, where people are gonna be getting used with till gas. A lot of people are gonna be exposed to till gas in this Texas country. But, you know, this is just a good time to kind of make fun of you guys. It's kind of funny, to be, to be quite honest, like, watching you guys' city become new fucking Portland. Like, what the fuck is wrong?
Hey, uh, foul language is not allowed.
What?
No.
What?
Foul language is not allowed.
No, no, I'm a speech impediment. You misunderstood me. Sorry. No, I have a speech impediment, you misunderstood me, sorry. Don't discriminate against me again, please. It's not respectful at all. What? What? What do you want to say? What? No, you didn't say anything? I'm finishing my few minutes.
Hey, address me only, please.
What?
The rules are, you can only speak to me as the chair, that's...
Why did he speak to me? Am I not supposed to respond when you guys interrupt me?
A public, a public comment.
He speaks to me first. Tell him not to speak to me if you don't want me to talk to him again, okay?
I can only ask you to speak to me.
Get your people back in line, get your people in line, and then I will line up after you, okay?
All right, thank you, Mr. King, appreciate that.
Yeah, I would appreciate your people lining up. Anyways, please, folks, should really stop, you know, boning elderly ladies. I just want to say that. You know, King, King J, Emperor over here, guys. Taj, John Tent, baby.
John Tent.
Thank you very much for that comment.
Hey, guys, it's me, Alex Stein. I just want to say, this has been a terrible meeting. I mean, it's been so boring, I just listened to all these people drone on. And let me tell you something, Jennifer, I love big booty Latinas. So I sit here and I see, yes, I love...
You are out of line.
Well, I can't say I love big booty Latinas? How do you figure that?
That, that is...
Wait, how is that a...
First response I'm going to have.
So my First Amendment, right, I'm allowed to say I like big booty Latinas? How is that a crime? Is that because you're a big booty Latina?
That is the second time.
Wait, how is that...
Do you have a comment?
No, I do have a comment about technology, but you're yelling at me because I'm talking about big booty Latinas?
I'm not yelling at you.
Listen, AOC is my favorite big booty Latina, you're my second favorite big booty Latina. So don't get all, you know, butthurt about that. I still think you're a beautiful lady, a little thick, but I like them thick. I mean, I don't want some skinny mini-girl, I want somebody that has some cushion for the pushing, you know what I mean, Jennifer? So this is the problem, is the tech here in New York City, it's absolutely ridiculous. Now my wife has got her OnlyFans on MyCity.com. She's on MyCity showing her vagina for like $5.99 a month. And I know that you could probably make some money... Yeah, that's MyCity, Jennifer. What? What's wrong? Keep it clean? What, do you know the First Amendment? You know, I'm allowed, hey, no. She, she... Do you not understand the First Amendment? I'm allowed to say, I'm allowed to say whatever I want. I'm allowed, no, you don't understand the First Amendment. Then I'm allowed to say big booty Latina. Big booty Latina is not a crime to say that, officer. But this guy is such a dummy, he doesn't understand, it's not a crime. I can go to a meeting, I can call him a dummy, I can call you a big booty Latina, I can call you an idiot, I can call you a mask wearer, probably five times vaccinated, and I know you're probably going to get my... I can say all that. I'm a pimp on a blimp, y'all don't understand this. I've sued y'all, and I've won. So I can call you a big booty Latina, I can say whatever I want.
Thank you.
Primetime99. Yeah, y'all are going to learn the law, I'm a pimp on a blimp. Y'all think y'all can play with me? Look me up, Jennifer, look me up. Pimp on a blimp.
I wouldn't waste the data on looking.
Alex Stein?
How you doing, Mayor? You know, I've been coming up to this dais for a long time. You and I have had our political differences. I didn't really like the way you handled COVID. I didn't like that you separated the public speakers, the first five, and then separated the rest to the end, making it much harder for the public to speak to our elected officials, which I would disagree with wholeheartedly. But I also was hard on you. I brought up Nikita, I brought up the Ring Doorbell Camera, I brought up the divorce, and that was messy, and that was wrong. You cheated on your wife, and you got caught on the doorbell camera. Remember that one, in your divorce proceedings? Remember that one? And I saw recently, you were at the RNC speaking. You were also at the future 47th President's House, Mar-a-Lago, on election night. So now that you are a conservative, I'd like to mend the fences, if I could. And I'd like a olive branch, because, listen, half these council members are openly homosexual, and I know that that can sometimes be difficult to deal with. You know, the LGBTQ community can sometimes be very catty, I think. So my point is, I would like to mend the fences. And if we could, extend some sort of olive branch. So, I'm getting ahold of somebody very special. They can just...
Hello?
Hello, President Trump, I'm here with Mayor Johnson. I'm wondering, could you help us out a little bit? Because I know you guys are best friends. Can you help us out a little bit, mend the fences?
Well, we are going to be able to help out a lot of people, right? We're going to be helping out the American people better than anybody's ever helped the American people before. You know, we won the election in what many people would call a landslide, a bigger landslide than Chris Christie after White Castle. But you look at Mayor Johnson, not doing a great job, but we're going to do a fantastic job.
The Texas Open Meeting Act requires there to be...
Wait, President Trump, they're trying to interact. President Trump, hold on, wait, why are you interrupting my speech?
There was a point of order raised.
Yeah, why are you, from who?
I have a point of order because the Texas Open Meeting Act requires there to be someone in person or on camera visible. If they're speaking, if they're speaking before a body.
Thank you. There's nothing that says in the Open Public Meetings Act you can't use your phone. It's funny, because you can use multimedia presentations, you're so smart. You know, it's funny, you're just mad because your boyfriend...
I'll let you continue, go ahead.
Yeah, you have to allow it, you have to allow it, because you're allowed to have multimedia presentations. President Trump, go ahead, sorry, one of the, one of the feminine ones, Matt, okay, go ahead.
Well, these are very bad people if they're trying to interrupt. And they probably sit where they pee like Justin Trudeau. You know, I just met with him, we call him Justine, by the way. And he thinks he's the Prime Minister of Canada, but he's going to be our next governor. And we said we're going to slap you so hard, Justine Trudeau, going to slap you so hard with the tariffs. But he didn't like that too much. But we're going to have a great country, we're going to have a fantastic country once again. And there's a lot of bad hombres in this country, we're going to get them the hell out.
President Trump, real quick. President Trump, please tell Mayor Johnson to forgive me before you go. We're almost out of time.
Please forgive him, he's a tremendous guy, I've known him for a long time. Please forgive him, he's a wonderful person, Alex deserves a pardon, and we're going to make it happen.
Thank you, President Trump, have a good one. And that's all I'm asking for, I'm asking for a pardon. You know, I know a lot of these council members probably go to drag queen storytime for children, and they hang out on Oaklawn, and lord knows what they do. But it's probably disgusting, but I love you, thank you, Mayor Johnson, I apologize.
Mr. Mayor, this concludes your open microphone speakers for this meeting.
All right, let's move on to our voting agenda, please.
Hello, Mayor Moore, my name's Alex Stein. I reside at 7509 Inwood Road. And I'm here because emotionally, I'm not doing well. My wife, she's been very unhappy with me lately because I have a unique opinion. And that opinion is that I want to help Puff Daddy get out of jail. And I think it's absolutely ridiculous that the guy would be arrested for doing a couple freak-offs, and he never really hurt anybody, in my opinion. And I think that should be known, that Puff Daddy should be innocent. And I wrote him a little song. You guys can sing if you want. We miss you, Puff. We want you out. Don't cry and shout. You should be free. Let's call Jay-Z. Puff Daddy's not a felon, just because he got freaky with Ellen. Puff Daddy should be free, no, he doesn't have HIV. Puff Daddy is the best, Puff Daddy's better than the rest. Puff Daddy didn't kill Biggie, you know that is a lie. Puff Daddy was never cried. Puff Daddy is having fun. Puff Daddy is my son. Puff Daddy had a gun. Puff Daddy is the best. Puff Daddy beats the rest. Puff Daddy is my hero. Puff Daddy's not a zero. Puff Daddy should be free. Puff Daddy doesn't have HIV. Puff Daddy is not a felon for what he did with Ellen. Puff Daddy is not a felon, I don't care what he did with Ellen. Puff Daddy should be free. Someone please call Jay-Z, I love you, Puff. Please let him out. This is so hard for me and my family right now, Mayor Moore. This is a far-off freak-off, he just did a couple freak-offs. He didn't do anything, not on tape. So, it's all on video, him and LeBron James, whatever they did, it's on tape. What he did with Kamala Harris, and we should make it, we're felons can vote. So Puff Daddy can still vote for Kamala Harris for President of the United States of America. Puff Daddy, he should be free. And Puff Daddy doesn't have HIV. I'm just emotional, I just, I free my boy Puff. I don't care what he did. He should be innocent, he's getting set up. And don't let it happen the same result of what happened to Jeffrey Epstein. Please, Mayor, if you can do anything, I love you, um, thank you, bye.
Mr. Stein, did you, did you say your address?
It's 7509 Inwood Road, you're welcome to come over anytime. And me and Puff Daddy, we did a lot of stuff.
Done, Mr. Stein, bye.
If you want to come over, see you soon.
The next person, oh, we have a lot of people to talk to.
My name's Alex Stein, I just want to say thank you to the council for having this. But let's just be honest, I mean, this is just an exercise in some sort of weird virtue signal where you want to act like you care about veterans, when in reality, you don't care about veterans. We're sitting here, we're talking about fluorescent lighting inside of a homeless shelter, right? But let's talk about the thousands of illegal immigrants that get to live in Manhattan rent-free for months on end. And not only that, when they get the free food, we, we, we spend millions of dollars on the food. And you know what, they say, "We don't like this food. This food is not typical to what we eat in Venezuela." So you know what New York City's going to do? New York City's going to go, and we're going to spend millions of dollars to give these illegal immigrants gift cards while veterans are out here literally freezing on the streets right now. So we're talking about a homeless shelter for some veterans? When if I say that I'm asylum seeker, if I'm a terrorist from Venezuela, and I was a Trinderruga gang member, and I said, "I'm coming here to claim asylum because this is such a great sanctuary city," you're going to give me a free hotel in Manhattan? But a person that goes to Iraq and defends our country against the actual Taliban, they don't get any social services? Or if they do get social services, it's not a four-star hotel in the middle of Manhattan? Is Borden in the middle of Manhattan at a four-star establishment? I don't think so. So why do illegal immigrants in New York City get better conditions than our veterans who go out there and risk their lives for American citizens? Not just do they risk their lives for New Yorkers, they risk their lives for everybody in this country. And believe it or not, these veterans risk their lives for these illegal immigrants that get to take advantage of New York's social services. So you want to sit here, you want to act like you want to help somebody? Why don't you do something about all the people taking advantage of this city, the hard-working American citizens that are struggling, but you don't care about them? You'd rather give an illegal immigrant that has a criminal history longer than a damn CVS receipt, you'd rather give him free room and board and a gift card to eat at any New York establishment that he chooses? That is wrong. New York City is the, it's the epicenter of culture. New York leads the way of our country. So the fact that we have a country like this, that is just discarding these veterans and treating them as they are less than a normal citizen, this city should be ashamed of themselves. Mayor Adams should be ashamed of themselves. All the people on these councils should be ashamed of themselves because you sit here and you say, "Well, I don't know if I can get it passed." This should be a bipartisan issue. You don't think that veterans help out Republicans and Democrats? This is common sense. So New York City doesn't have common sense? Thank God Donald Trump got rid of that congestion pricing. That has cost me hundreds of dollars in Uber prices every time I visit this city. So thank God that that is gone. And help out our veterans by kicking every illegal immigrant out of the Roosevelt Hotel, except for the big booty Latinas, they can stay. If you're a nine, you're fine.
Thank you, Alex Stein, we have a question for you?
Yeah, I would actually...
For sure, Kristi.
Um, first of all, that you should really apologize, that was an inappropriate comment.
No, it's not, it's not inappropriate at all, I can say big booty. Okay, yeah, according to you, it's true, I'm allowed to say booty, so... I'm allowed to say big booty.
Be a little respectful.
And it's funny, because in a school, you can say booty. There's much more degrading terms for a derriere than booty. So you want to sit here and act like I'm cussing because I said big booty Latina? You need to wake up, no, you're so sensitive.
First of all, let me tell you something, you need to do your research, okay? Check yourself, okay? You should know your role, you should know who you're speaking to. The people in this veterans' community actually give a shit. We've met with Tom Homan, we discussed the migrant crisis, okay?
And why don't you kick them out then? Why are they, why am I scared of getting robbed by a bunch of illegal immigrants? So you say you're doing something, why are they all still there? I know, but you politicians are fake.
Cut the mic, cut the mic.
You're fake, you're not even from this city, bro.
I don't hate to be from this city, I work in this city. It's funny, because I work in this city. Get off there, I'm walking out, guys, get off there. I work in this city, get off my arm. Got the body cam for your...
It's not a problem, sir. Sir, please enter the elevator. Sir, enter the elevator, no one's touching you, no one's touching you.
You know what you're trying to do? I know, but listen. Yeah, but you're trying to step on my foot, you're trying to be so slick, you're trying to be... When I walked in the elevator, so quit trying to play stupid, I know you are stupid, but why don't you try to play like you're smart for five seconds?
Five seconds?
Yeah, trying to touch me, listen.
You got anything else?
Yeah, it's pathetic. Yeah, hey, go do what you need to do, go step and fetch some more.
I'm going to call Alex Stein up, who's the final witness, who's testifying in person. I appreciate your patience. I know a lot of witnesses have been here since we started this morning, and we'll get to our virtual witnesses after this testimony. Good afternoon to you, you can begin your testimony, you have three minutes.
My name's Alex Stein, thank you, Mr. McDuffie. And you've had a lot of people come up here and speak, including Heisman Trophy winner Mark Ingram. And everybody spoke in support of this bill. But I noticed something, everybody here has a personal investment in this city. Now, when you look at Washington DC, what do you think about? Politics, right? We don't think about sports. So I think that you, by designating Washington DC as a sports capital of America, is a travesty because if we think about sports, let's think about a real team, the Dallas Cowboys, America's team, right? We don't call the Redskins America's team. Your team here doesn't even have a name. You guys changed the name, remember the Washington Wizards? You had to change the name from the Bullets to the Wizards. Then you had Gilbert Arenas in the arena with guns pointing at players. So, you know, if you think about what Washington DC stands for and what they break records with, in 2023, they had nearly 500 homicides, breaking the previous record of most homicides ever in Washington DC. So I think if we're talking about records, Washington DC would be more fitted to be designated as the crime capital of America and not the sports capital. And you have sports, you might not know this, Mr. McDuffie, but NASCAR. Y'all don't have any NASCAR in this town. any NASCAR in this town. Imagine Dale Earnhardt right now, the Intimidator, rolling in his black Chevy right now, thinking about somewhere in DC is going to become the sports capital of the world, when y'all don't even have representation when it comes to college football. You had one of the best players in the country sitting here, Blake Harper, I believe his name is, one of the top players. But he's talking about Howard basketball. Howard is a good basketball program, but y'all will never have a team that will compete for a football national championship in this city. And in Texas, where I'm from, football's king. And believe it or not, football is the number-one sport here as well. It's the most popular sport. And you look at the Ravens, they're 30 miles away. So when it comes to football, y'all don't even have the best team in a 30-mile radius. So it's an absolute joke that we're going to sit here and you guys are going to try to designate this town as a sports capital of America. I am in opposition of this 100%. It needs to be a real city like Dallas, Texas, that has real universities like SMU, that has been a top college football program and a top basketball program. And we need a freaking city that represents the whole entire country. When people think about Washington, DC, all they think about is politics. And what does politics do? It divides us. Sports are supposed to be the ultimate unifier, whether you're rich or poor, you get on the same court and you compete. So when we try to designate Washington, DC as the sports capital, I think it is an injustice to every other great city like Boston that has incredible sports history, New York City, even Los Angeles has great history. So you don't have to make it Dallas because I would want Dallas. But I think that this is an actual travesty. And I know a lot of very important athletes have spoken in favor of this, but I truly have to say that I speak in opposition of naming Washington, DC the sports capital of America.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you. Yo, what's up, Mayor Johnson? It's a pimp on a blimp. And I'm here because I'm really, really, really disappointed with our city. I know recently you spoke at the RNC. And it's funny that they let you speak there because it's obviously you're a Democrat and you're faking that to try to gain political support to run for a higher office than mayor. So you're a fraud, just like how you cheated on your wife and you got caught on the doorbell camera. Remember that one? In your divorce proceedings? Remember that one? So you're a con artist, just like you con the mother of your kids. And you want to be a Republican, but now those kids are being raised by a single mom. Another statistic, right? So let me tell you something. This is why I'm frustrated with the city, because you have the audacity to go speak at the RNC after Donald Trump was almost assassinated. And we had Arturo Martinez, a sergeant at the Dallas Police Department, for 14 years saying that he should have aimed better. Thomas Brooks, the assassin, should have aimed better. I think that's pretty disgusting that our police force, some of the highest people in the police force, the sergeant, says it's okay for a president to be assassinated. Cops aren't supposed to have political viewpoints, okay? I'm all about the First Amendment. But not if you're a sergeant calling for the assassination of a president. And I don't know if you know your history very well, but we're in Dallas, Texas. You know, something really bad happened here with a president. May I remind you, JFK. So I don't think it's very funny when you have sergeants of our police force that think it's okay to say that a president should have been assassinated. Assassinated. That's disgusting. And that reflects on you because you have low moral character. Look at our police force. Look at the Dallas Police Department. Amanda Geiger, what did she do? She walked into Botham Jr.'s apartment, blew his brains out. So we have a police force that has some serious issues. And you being the mayor, you're in charge of that, buddy. So now you want to be a fake Republican? That's cool. But you were the first one to make us wear masks. You were the first one vaccinated. I'm not going to forget that, okay? I know who you really are. And you're trying to placate us. That's not going to work with a pimp on a blimp. So I'm going to call you out, just like you cheated on your wife and now you're trying to cheat on the Republican Party. It disgusts me that you're trying to do that. You have no integrity. You lean on the black vote. Imagine, I'd like to see you put on a MAGA hat and go to South Dallas. Would you ever do that, Mayor Johnson? No, because you're a coward. That's why. And then let me tell you something. It takes a lot of guts to come up here and call out the Dallas Police Department. You can smirk and laugh all you want. You think it's so funny that your police department is calling for the assassination of a president? That's so funny. Get that on camera. That's so funny. You got that little smirk on your face. Well, I'm not a bitch-ass like your bitch-ass. You understand that?
You can leave now. We don't get to use that language here.
Okay, I can say whatever I want.
You can escort him out now. Thank you.
Thank you. Your next speaker, Monty Bennett. Monty Bennett is not present.
Hello, Richardson City Council. My name is Abel Garcia, and I am an illegal immigrant from Mexico. I fled to the United States because I was forced to transition my gender to a female because of the crazy lifestyle that I grew up, surrounded by the cartel. I am so grateful to be here in America, and now I am finally a man again since I had my breast implants removed, even though I have slight genital atrophy from the hormone blockers that was prescribed. I'm still able to meet a lot of cool and interesting people while also enriching me culturally. I believe America is the greatest country on Earth because it's built on second chance. And I believe that no one in the world deserves a second chance at his presidency more than Donald J. Trump. I am here representing the newest Political Action Committee in Richardson, Texas. We are called Illegals for Trump, and through the Political Action Committee, we have the line of communication to the 45th President. And he has ensured us that Donald Trump will be offering illegal immigrants better social service than they are currently under Joe Biden, and that if you sign up today, we can show you how to vote in the upcoming presidential election without an ID through the use of mail-in ballots. We can also help you access free hotel rooms in New York City as well, as well as free Visa prepaid gift cards so that you can enjoy America's awesome culture. This country has saved my life, and because of that, my genitals are able to heal from the medical abuse I faced outside of Texas. So I beg and I plead you to please consider joining the Illegals for Trump Political Action Committee so that we can win this upcoming election and make sure that everyone's abuelita has a free apartment and free healthcare and a used 2004 Honda Civic at the very least. Illegals for Trump is the future. We welcome all illegal immigrants, even Chinese, Russians, Haitians, Dominican, Afghani, Pakistani, Indian, Puerto Rican, Canadian, South African, and any other illegal alien that wants to support Trump and vote without a legal ID. Please follow me on Twitter for more information, @officialableG.
Would you please give us your name and address for the record? No clapping, please. Name and address for the record, please.
Abel Garcia and Dallas, Texas.
That was very good, Abel. He's an illegal immigrant, guys.
You've already had your time. Please sit down.
Sorry, just trying to help the illegals.
Mr. Alex Stein.
Howdy, Mayor. My name's Alex Stein. I'm also a member of the Booster Club as well. And I'm here today for a very serious thing. It might sound like a joke. I don't want you guys to laugh.
Sir, address, please.
Oh, it's 7509 Inwood Road. And this is why I'm here, though, Mayor West. I'm talking to you man-to-man. As a booster of the Coppell Cowboys, I love that high school. I support the Cowboys so much. But what I don't support are the Dallas Cowboys. And I'm here with a petition that I would like it if we could change the name of the Coppell Cowboys to reflect a franchise that actually wins. The Dallas Cowboys stink. They have not been to an NFC Championship game in over 25 years. Jerry Jones sued his own daughter because she tried to say that he's her real father, and he is her biological father. Jerry Jones is too afraid to admit that he's got a daughter. Then why do we think that he could run some football team? And it makes me sick. They signed Ezekiel Elliott. Ezekiel Elliott stinks. He just played for the Patriots. Now, look at the Dallas Cowboys. When's the last time they were good? The last time they were good, starter jackets were in vogue at the time. Now starter jackets, nobody even wears them. The Dallas Cowboys stink, Mayor, and I want to change the Coppell Cowboys so we don't reflect a mediocre franchise. The Cowboys aren't going to the playoffs this year. They're going to be lucky to go 6-11, which I imagine they will. So I want you, as the mayor, to try to start a trend where we're not going to reflect that of a crappy NFL franchise with a bunch of players that beat their wives. Josh Brent, Dallas Cowboy player, killed his teammate drunk driving. They just signed C.D. Lamb. Jerry Jones said he's such a good GM, but yet he paid him all that money and had him miss the entire spring training. He didn't even participate in team drills, and yet he still paid him as the second-highest non-quarterback in the NFL. So the Dallas Cowboys are misran, and I don't want you to misrun this city, Mayor West. I need you to show some support, and I need you to try to sign this petition so that we can stop being associated with a crappy franchise like the Dallas Cowboys, who have not been even close to championship caliber in almost 30 years. So I stand up here and I beg you, each and all of you council members, we have to denounce the Dallas Cowboys. Can I have two more minutes? Two more minutes?
Just a moment. Go ahead.
Thank you. And this is why I love Coppell, because as a citizen here, I feel comfortable being able to speak freely because the Dallas Cowboys reflect this Metroplex. And then the fact that the Coppell Cowboys have their first game this Friday, everybody's going to be ringing the bell. Go Cowboys, go Cowboys. I don't want to be associated with Jerry Jones and his sad excuse. I mean, if you look at Dak Prescott, heck of a player, but guess what? He's up for contract renewal, and we don't have franchise tag rights. So we're going to lose him, or we're going to have to pay him $75 million, which we can't afford because Jerry Jones doesn't know how to manage his checkbook. So I'm begging you, please, all of you people out here in Coppell, we have to denounce the Dallas Cowboys. They are the worst thing ever. I mean, it's enough that, you know, my transgender daughter, Lizzie, you know, has to go through all this embarrassment by, you know, her peers. She does not need to have the embarrassment that she's associated with a franchise that is mediocre at best. So I just really appreciate y'all giving me the time to come up here and denounce the Dallas Cowboys. They stink. They haven't been good in nearly 30 years. And, you know, half the team is a bunch of, you know, ex-convicts. So we need a better caliber of kids. These kids that play for the Coppell Cowboys are salt of the earth, great kids, great students. They don't deserve to be associated with a guy like Jerry Jones, who has a daughter that he sued because she just wants a little bit of that Jones family wealth. So that's how tight he is. So if he won't even pay his own daughter, imagine what he'll pay to these free agents. Nothing. And that's what the Cowboys did. They didn't sign one free agent this offseason that is worth a darn. So I'm sick and tired of it. And I'm just begging this city council that we have to change the name of the local high school team away from the Cowboys. We could be the Coppell Gender Kings. We can be the Coppell Kids. I don't know, but just something better because I get so dang sad. I turn on my TV and I've broken seven TVs cheering on the damn Cowboys. I've broken seven TVs. I just hate the Dallas Cowboys. They need to fix them, win some games. They've broken my heart so much. I'm sorry, Mayor. I don't mean to get so emotional. I'm just upset with Jerry. I love you. I love you, Dak. Pay Dak Prescott. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight.
You guys want to sign it? I'll give it to the bailiff.
Hello, my name's Alex Stein. I'm here in New York City, all the way from Dallas, Texas, on the 23rd anniversary of the terror attacks that happened on September 11, 2001. These buildings were owned by the Port...
This hearing is solely focused on the NYC Ferry?
Amanda, it's about the Port Authority. Do not try to shut me down. Now, on the 23rd anniversary...
You can continue on to talk about the Port Authority.
Yeah, I am talking about the Port Authority. The Port Authority owned these buildings. They sold them to Larry Silverstein for a very cheap price. If you look into Tower VII, it looked like a controlled demolition. University of Alaska at Fairbanks did a study on this, and they said that the way that these buildings fell looked clearly like a controlled demolition. So we need to look into the Port Authority on why they were able to sell these buildings so cheaply. Now, if you do some research...
Does it have anything to do with the NYC Ferry and the Port Authority stuff?
Let me talk about the Port Authority. If you do some research into these towers, they had irreparable asbestos. Not only were they basically totaled because the price to fix this asbestos made the buildings worthless...
Stein, Mr. Stein, I'd like to reiterate that while you are talking about the Port Authority...
Yes, I am. Quit shutting me down. Are you going to stop the call?
This is connected to the NYC Ferry.
I'm here to bring up 9/11 truth, and you're trying to stop me because you don't like this. Listen, are you the same person that sent the EPA?
I want you to be connected to the NYC Ferry's development and its ticketing system.
Listen, are the ferries under the Port Authority's jurisdiction?
Would you like to talk about the Port Authority and the possibility of it being an NYC Ferry stop?
Listen, you're trying to hide the truth. If you look into 9/11, you guys lied. You said the air was okay. The EPA said the air was fine on September 11. And all those firefighters that got cancer and died, what do you care about them? What do you think about those? What do you think about all the people? No, no, it's not my time.
This only is focused on the NYC Ferry system.
Let me get... What is going on? Let me grab my phone. I'll leave. I'll leave. Guys, I'll leave. Grab my... Can I get my phone? Guys, grab my phone. I'll leave. I'll leave. I'll leave. I'll leave.
Keep going. We got it. Keep going.
What is going on? Why are you touching me? I'm leaving. Can I have my phone?
Welcome to bring your phone.
What is going on? You guys don't care about 9/11 truth? Throwing me, touching me? Why are you grabbing me like that? Let me have my phone. This is ridiculous. Listen, I'm leaving. Stop touching me. I'm leaving. Dude, don't push me downstairs, dude. Yes, you are, dude. What is going on? You guys are sick. Quit... Dude, quit pushing me. I'm going downstairs. I'm going downstairs, dude. Get off me. This is ridiculous. They're kicking me out, Joe. All for talking about 9/11. Dude, what are you guys doing? Dude, quit touching me. You guys are sick. Investigate 9/11, dude. You guys are pathetic. Stop touching me.
Please exit.
I'm going to exit. You don't need to keep touching. Dude, what are you doing? I'm going downstairs. Let me walk down the stairs. Gosh, trying to push you downstairs. You guys are going to hear from my attorney. You guys are all going to hear from my attorney. What do y'all think this is? Kangaroo court? I'm allowed to speak at a city meeting. You guys are going to hear from my attorney. All of you guys are going to hear from my attorney. Look into 9/11 truth. That's what I want. They lied about the attacks on 9/11. They said the air was fine. And look at all the firefighters that died of cancer. You guys are scumbags. You guys are scumbags. What about all the people that died of cancer? You said the air was fine. What about their families? No father at Christmas. You guys are scumbags. Absolutely pathetic. We've got this on camera. These people are sick. Absolutely sick. I'll be back. You're going to be hearing from my attorney, especially you, Leonard Leonardo, with your beard, bald head. Look at this bald head. Can't grow hair. These guys are pathetic. Yeah, you have a good day. Yeah, you're going to be hearing from my attorney, Leonardo. And I know you don't got any money, those fake earrings in your ear. You guys are scumbags. Look at the 9/11 truth. All the people that died from cancer. And I'm out here trying to bring awareness. Now you're kicking me out. You're a scumbag. You're a scumbag.
Alex Stein. Who reads the Speaker guidelines?
Where do I sit? Do I sit at this one or... Does it matter?
City, Ms. City Secretary, or does somebody want to read the Speaker guidelines for...
Yes, Chair, I can read that for you.
All right. Thank you.
Speakers must observe the same rules of propriety, decorum, and good conduct applicable to the members of the Board. Any speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks, or who become boisterous while addressing the Board, shall be removed from addressing the Board. You will have three minutes to speak, Mr. Stein. Your timer is up on the monitor. We do ask that when your time has expired, please stop.
Mr. Stein, you may proceed.
Yo, 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 okay. Well, I don't know if we should start the clock because the mic wasn't on. But I just want to say to the Honorable Ethics Commission, thank you guys for being here. You guys represent Dallas, Texas, which is a legendary city. But sadly, there's a stain on this city over the past 30 years. And that stain has been the Dallas Cowboys. The Dallas Cowboys have been an organization that has been just openly horrible, not hiding it. They have not been to an NFC Championship game in 30 years. And Jerry Jones just hired Brian Schottenheimer, who has no head coaching experience at all. He's never been the head coach of any program, not a high school, not a JV team, not an elementary school football team. And now you've got Jerry Jones, who's out here hiring Brian Schottenheimer, talking about going to glory holes. And when we talk about ethics, we've got a guy, Jerry Jones, who is the most famous person in this city, arguably, who represents the city of Dallas. And ethically and morally, he's very repugnant. He even had a daughter out of wedlock with a flight attendant in Arkansas. And when she came out and said, "Jerry, you are my biological father," what did Jerry Jones do? He sued his own daughter. What kind of ethics is that? The most powerful guy that owns the most powerful sports franchise in the world won't even acknowledge his own daughter. That shows you the kind of ethics we have here in Dallas. And the Dallas Cowboys stink. They haven't won anything in nearly 30 years. And you've got the Redskins going to an NFC Championship game with a coach that was on the Cowboys' staff last year. So I'm sick of it. I'm sick and tired of this mediocre franchise representing our city. So you, as an Ethics Commission, you need to call out Jerry Jones. You need to say, "Listen, you represent our city. The Cowboys represent Dallas. They represent you. They represent me. They represent all the illegal immigrants that are here, the legal immigrants, all the trans people. They represent all of us. It doesn't matter about their political ideology. None of that matters." The only thing that matters is that the Dallas Cowboys were once America's team. And that is no longer true. They stink. And that's why I come up here. And that's why I'm passionate. Because, listen, I'm doing pretty good. Donald Trump won. I'm happy about that. Tucker Carlson, my biological stepfather, his show's dominating. I mean, everybody in my orbit is doing good, except for the Dallas freaking Cowboys. They stink. And honestly, I would like it if Jerry Jones would sell the team to the cartel. Like, why would you with the cartel to run the Dallas Cowboys? Because those Mexicans could figure out how to sneak across the goal line. They sneak across the hardest goal line every day, the border. You don't think they can sneak across one thin white line inside of AT&amp;T Stadium? Trust me, they can. So listen, Jerry, I know you're watching this. You suck. Your son sucks as a manager. Everything you do is wrong. You signed all these players, and now we can't afford to sign any other players because you gave too much money to players that aren't worth it. So fire Jerry Jones and fix our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stein. Are there any other speakers today?
Starting us off tonight will be Mr. Michael Jackson. Good evening, Mr. Jackson. Please remember to state your name and address, and you will have three minutes.
My name is Michael Jackson. I live in Neverland Ranch. Good evening, Flowerman City Council. I know you know who I am. I'm the King of Pop, AKA Michael Jackson. I'm also one of the top Michael Jackson impersonators in the DFW Metroplex. Hee-hee. But I'm here on behalf of Michael Jackson's Legacy Coalition to speak out and denounce the recent behavior of Rabbi Shmuley. Now, you may or might not know this, but I had some spiritual guidance during one of the toughest moments of my life, when I was facing a very serious criminal allegation of sexual molestation. And this man came to my defense. His name is Rabbi Shmuley. I don't know if you've heard of him. He's one of the most famous rabbis in America. But recently, he has been perpetuating negative stereotypes of the Jewish people by wearing a prosthetic nose. Have you guys seen this? All the tropes of Judaism he's trying to make fun of, which I stand against. So Rabbi Shmuley, I denounce you. We denounce you, Rabbi Shmuley. And I just want to make it clear that I was friends with Rabbi Shmuley before he had a kosher sex store with his daughter, before he sold kosher lubrication and kosher sex devices. So I just want to make that clear. I used to be friends with this man and not the man that he became shortly thereafter. I also want to say that I stand with Candace Owens. I think that she was right, and she did not deserve to get fired. I want to say this, that this is very important, that I want to cease fire in Palestine. I stand with all the children, and I believe no children should starve. Don't be ignorant. Hee-hee-hee. I love my Jewish and my Palestinian children the same. But I must also bring attention to the recent court case against my estate. I don't know if you're familiar with the false allegations, Brian, but I've been accused of select sexual molestation against two young boys named Wade Robinson and James Safechuck. And they came out recently in a documentary and said that I touched them. That is provably false. First of all, Wade Robinson, the lead in that documentary? He testified on my behalf twice in front of California's top state prosecutor as my lead character witness, and never said that I touched him. But then conveniently, when he was not hired to be the lead choreographer of the Cirque du Soleil Michael Jackson show, he, shortly thereafter, decided to say that he was molested by me. Now, the second accuser is James Safechuck. He says that I molested him in my Disney-style trainhouse. That is provably false because the architect had not even drawn the plans. So I must say that even though I'm accused of some of the most repugnant things in the world, I know that's true, but nothing that I have done is as disgusting as Rabbi Shmuley twerking on his children. So I just leave you with this. Rabbi Shmuley, you ain't my robot. No, 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 you are not. And I didn't touch any boys. No, I didn't. I never pulled their pants off, never touched them.
Mr. Jackson, your time has expired.
All right, all right. Just want to say, I denounce you, Rabbi Shmuley.
Mr. Jackson, your time has expired.
I love you.
Howdy, how y'all doing? I know sometimes y'all don't like to turn on my camera because I'm a bisexual cowboy and being a bisexual cowboy, I'm really worried about my rights now that Joe Biden has stepped out of the 2024 election. Being a gay cowboy is one of the hardest things a cowboy can do.
Mr. Stein, please state your name and address.
My name's Alex Stein. I live at 7509 Inwood Road where my horses stay and I'm a gay cowboy.
Thank you.
I'm one of the gayest cowboys in Richardson, Texas. I have gay Cowboys of Richardson Facebook group that I run. Joe Exotic is not the only gay cowboy. He's one of the gayest, though, but he's not the only one. And I just want to say, I wrote a little country song, a little ballad, because I'm worried about the upcoming election, just like y'all should be. I see Kent over there. He's about to fall asleep. How you doing, Kent? This election's going to be hella scary. You know what I mean? You know, they could rig it, jig it. Who knows what they're going to do? But I'm telling you something, I'm standing with Kamala Harris and I don't care what she did with Montel Williams or Mayor Willie Brown. I don't care about that. All I care about is supporting an Indonesian-Jamaican woman that stands up for gay cowboys. And so if I can get y'all to just sing this with me, that would make it a little bit better. Yo, it's Kamala Harris. Let me tell you a story. From California's courts to the nation's glory. Born in Oakland, yes, she rose to the top. First female VP, breaking all the stops from Howard University. She got that liberal arts degree, fighting for injustice, keeping people free. Prosecutor Senator, now she's the VP, making history. Dreams just ain't for sleep. Kamala, she's got the power, climbing up that big old ladder. Hour by hour, she's breaking barriers, making her mark in the White House where she's leaving her spark. Please be quiet while I do this. Daughter of immigrants, they had a dream. Shemilla and Donald, a powerful team. She's tough on crime but fair and just. And Kamala, her words I trust. On the campaign trail, she stood so tall and stood by Biden when she got that call. For the people she fights every day and night, equality and justice, that's her might. And Kamala Harris, she's got the power, climbing up the ladder, hour by hour. Kamala has got that stamina. 2024, Kamala's knocking on the door. Donald Trump can't stop our girl. We are living in an Indonesian world. I love all you ladies out in the land, but I'm a gay cowboy. I only want a man. And that song's for you, Kamala. I hope, Kamala, if you're watching this, I really wish you would consider letting me in your cabinet, speaking for you. As a gay cowboy, I can do more for you than any straight cowboy could ever do. And I really think that with my help, that we could transition multiple children, thousands of children, and get them to gender reassignment surgery that they want. So if you're ready to get mastectomies and bottom surgery for the babies, call on me, Kamala. Primetime 9 to 9, Alex Stein. God bless America.
Chester Mitchell.
Hey, guys, I just want to start off by saying, everybody here, give yourselves a round of applause for being here. Yes, you guys are the important people. We really appreciate it. And you know, what's going on in the world today is absolutely insane. We have the upcoming 2024 presidential election.
Excuse me, could you please give us your name?
Oh, yeah, it's Alex Stein, 7509 Inwood Road. You guys are all welcome to come over and party, have some Coors Lights. We don't drink Bud Light in my family. But no, a lot of people are talking about the election that's coming up and a lot of people think that Kamala Harris did some sort of coup to make Joe Biden step down. That's actually not true. Once Joe Biden got COVID and he realized that he couldn't smell little kids anymore, then he realized, what's the point of even being president, right? Is that... He goes, "Okay, well, you know, we live in a crazy world. Like, there's a lot of racism, which I'm really against." You know, a good friend of mine, Charlie Kirk, I don't know if you guys know him, but he recently got some hot water because he said that he would be hesitant to get on the plane if he noticed that he had an African-American pilot, which I have a different opinion. I love when I see a black pilot because that means you can smoke weed on the plane. All right, well, you know, a lot of people are talking about the schools. You know, I actually was a school teacher and I got fired for teaching critical race theory. I took the kids on a field trip. The first mistake I made is I didn't get parental waiver signed, but the second mistake is I took them to a plantation and I made the white kids pick cotton to try to teach them that they should be guilty for, you know, something they didn't do. But I got fired for that, which is ridiculous. And like, there's a lot of people in the conservative community that are anti-trans, like, they're saying that we should limit transgenders in women's sports. I don't think we should, guys, because we can gamble on transgenders and win money, guys. I won enough money from Leah Thomas. I turned draft kings into draft queens. That's so much money, right, Don? You like that? But the last thing is, there's too much trans hate. Like, right now, a lot of conservatives are getting mad. They say that they don't want transgenders in the military. I disagree because I think that transgenders would be great for the military because, one, they're the meanest people in the world and, two, they're the best at doing mass shootings. So you guys agree with that? No? Can we get two more minutes?
Your time has expired.
What is that?
Council? Sorry, sorry.
No, you guys didn't like that bit. You guys are a tough crowd. You guys are a tough crowd. It's hard. I'm out here grinding, Mayor. You guys can't... All thumbs down? You look like a ghost looking... Did you get him on camera doing the thumbs up?
Time's up.
I'm sorry.